Good evening. It is 5:31 on my clock and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Mashpee Public School Committee Business Meeting of November 15th, 2023. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who've lived here and have been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. So, the next item is to ratify the Agenda of November 15th, which includes: Public Comment, a presentation from Mashpee Middle High School Native American Students presenting on tribal sovereignty and rights of nature; the MASSS Academic Excellence Award presentation to Charlie Jenkins; the approval of the minutes from our October 18th, 2023 meeting; the share out of the representative of Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Education Department Student Advisory Committee Report; the report of the superintendent, which I will skip reading all of that, but it is there; the report of the Director of Finance; the Subcommittee Working Group Updates, which will include the Curriculum Subcommittee and Finance Working Group; and then specifically Assigned Unfinished Old Business, which include a revisit on the vote for the MMHS Boys Hockey Camp in Tilton, New Hampshire, December 1st through December 3rd. We will have a share out of the October 30th Zoom Community Meeting. And then we will be moving on to New Business, which include the FY '25 School Year Calendar First Review. We will have a share out from the MASSS Joint Conference, which was just recently held, November 8th through the 10th. Then items the chair did not reasonably know in advance. And then when all is said and done, we will all go home and enjoy the rest of our night. So, that being said, I will entertain a motion to ratify the Agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the Agenda as presented for November 15th, 2023.
Thank you. Dan?
Do you need to acknowledge that he's...
Oh, actually, yes, that's right. Thank you for pointing that out. We do, gonna back up one quick second. I do need to take roll call to establish quorum because we are having one member online. So, Dan Rodriguez?
Present.
Don Myers?
You're supposed to say "present."
Present.
Thank you. And Kathy Lewis, present. Thank you. We have quorum. Okay, now, we have a motion on the table to ratify the Agenda.
Yep.
And we need a second to ratify the Agenda, please?
Okay.
Thank you, Don.
Okay.
So, any discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
I vote to approve.
Don?
Yes.
And I also am a yes. Okay. Do we have anyone for public comment tonight? Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Mashpee Middle High School Presentation, Native American Students Present on Tribal Sovereignty and Rights of Nature. Do we have any of the students here tonight?
Is there anyone that's going in front of us? Do we have one other student that wants to show up?
Sure. I don't see Charlie Jenkins here. Is this your student?
Perfect.
Okay, good timing. Good timing. Just make sure, you can take the microphone out, but just make sure you're speaking into the microphone if you speak, please, so everyone can hear. You guys have an easy night. There's only two of us. And Don on computer, but like face to face.
Nattasuis Isaiah, Nuthomas Masipiat, Nataimasipiat. My name's Isaiah. I'm from Mashpee. And I live in Mashpee.
Nattasuis Jersey, Nuthomas Masipiat, Nataimasipiat. My name's Jersey and I live at, I'm from Mashpee and I live in Mashpee.
Okay. And we are part of Mashpee NEA. We are a native youth group that uses tribal law and tribal code to help and save our ecosystems that have been depleting ever since colonization for our people. And our first initiative is Save the Herring. And we want to save our herring because it's a huge part of our culture. We use it for, for a lot of things. We use it for fertilizer. We use it to like mark the new year for us. And we, of course, we eat it, we fry it, we corn it, we, what else? What else?
What else you got? Smoke it?
Yeah, we smoke it. I guess I'll just talk about that we want to enact the rights of nature. Sorry. So, it's a legal instrument that enables nature to have inherent rights. It's basically just giving like nature the same rights as humans and, and gives us basically rights to be able to protect it. Yeah. And when did we go to New York? September, we went to New York. And we were with like other people who have like the rights of nature. And we learned what they did and how it helps their communities. We talked to other native people there who also has the rights of nature. We led a march in New York that it was led by all indigenous people. And it was just basically about ending fossil fuels. Yeah.
Some events we've done for the, some events that we have done for the community around here and kind of other places is, we did kids, teach kids in Lakoid Bay, the Lakoid Bay area, where we, we presented to them, but we also, or yeah, we presented to them, thank you. And we, I also was sitting there teaching them how to burn a machine. And were you guys doing other stuff there?
Well, yeah, I was, I was showing, like teaching youth how we do our clam bakes. Like we had like little props, like little like lobsters and seaweed and stuff like that. And then there was a, obviously, we had NEA table talking about our group and what we do, teaching other youth what we're doing.
And another event that we've done was, we did the Charles River Paddle, where we paddled the Charles River. And we spoke at a event that had, I forgot what it was. It was, it was, it was a really big event. And it was one of our first very like big, like speaking in front of a crowd. So that was a very good experience for us and helped us with our speaking, but it also educated the people around there because I feel like they were very like, like surprised on what they were hearing about their rivers and everything and how it affects not just like the animals, but it affects the people.
Yeah. Also in California, we went to California also in September. We had a panel out there. We basically just talked about everything that we were doing. It was in front of like, how much people would you say? Probably like 200 people. And that was, yeah, 200 plus people. And that was big for us because it was kind of scary. It was my first time really talking in front of everybody because I joined recently. We also looked over other tribes, like, what is it, ordinances for their rights of nature. Because we're gonna draft our, try to draft our ordinance next. So, looking at other tribes' ordinances, it really helped us get an idea on how to do it.
Another thing we've done for the community is actually in the school back there that we two, I was, I was helping the Ryis build that. And we had a few youth there and we were teaching them how to get the cedar, like talking to them about the cedar and how to peel the poles and how to bend them and how to put the bark on and stuff. And it was, it was very good for them because instead of them going home, like playing their video games or whatever, they're sitting here learning about their culture and having fun doing it and like learning lessons that they can teach their kids. And the resolution, we passed a rights of nature resolution and the rights of nature resolution. All right, let me think real quick. The rights of nature resolution. So, we got, we, we looked at other tribes' resolutions that they use for, for like their problems that they had, like the Urok tribe, my boy Sammy. We went and we looked at what they did and how they like, like wrote it on that, like, because the resolutions, it's like whereas one, whereas two, whereas three. And we basically saw what worked for them and like fit in their cultural and, and like get their cultural like perspective and used it with ours and made our resolution. And we bring it to our tribal council. And we spoke like we did right now, like identically, like two mics, two people, right? And we went and we, we passed it and they, they all agreed on it. And that was a very big, big step in our, our footprint.
Yeah. Also in California, we had like a youth, like group there, where there was also other like tribal youth. We had like little papers where we were practicing writing resolutions. Our group kind of already had an idea how to write a resolution because we had, wrote one and got it passed. So, it was pretty cool that we knew how to do it and we were able to help like other youth do that.
Did you guys have any questions?
Well, I do have a question, but maybe if it's okay, I'd like to start with a comment. First off, just incredibly impressed by you guys and just needed to take a moment to say that. Recognizing that we live in a world where assimilation to kind of cultural norms is a major thing, being able to take your heritage, continue to move it forward, really work towards getting back to, you know, some of the most important core values of what it is to be a human being and, you know, especially with your background and your upbringing. Like again, super, super impressed by, by the two of you. And my slight question and a real question was, you said Lakoid Bay. Was that Lakoid Bay estuary?
Yes.
All right. You don't even understand the impact that you have even on what you did. My kids were going there for the summer for some courses and they were like loving and playing with all of the tribal pieces that were there and wanting to learn about it. So even beyond you guys physically being there, the impacts of having it there in present is huge. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. My question is always, how do you see us as a school committee supporting the work that you're doing or continuing to be a part of what you dream to see as you move forward with this work that you're doing?
I mean, I like to see, I like how you guys gave us like the space to build that, that, that we two and gave, and you guys are giving the, the high school and the Quashnet School. I appreciate the Casey Coombe School too, the Indian Ed Rooms, because those are really good. And I feel like, like one thing we could add though, for, for some of the tribal youth is like more like cultural classes for them. Because I feel like, like the times in school that I've like really like, like been like learning and like at kind of like peace kind of is when I'm like doing kind of more cultural stuff that I know I can like, like I know for a fact is like, I'm, instead of like being like, oh, I'm learning, um, like, I forgot, like, like physics, like I'm like, I'm not gonna be a physics major, but I know that I'm gonna be able to like use my beating again or use my, my language again or something like that. Like, you know what I mean? Like, because some people, like how I see school is like, we have all these options and we can pick one path and go this way and pick one path and go that way. But if we have cultural, cultural teachings, they'll always, like we'll always be able to use them and it won't be just like, oh, I might use it. Like, you know what I mean?
Thank you.
Yeah, I kind of agree with the Isaiah, definitely having more cultural classes at school. Because I know when we had the language class there, like I learned a lot. And yeah, it was one of my favorite classes. I enjoyed going there every day because it's just fun to learn your culture. And yeah, I think it's just very important, especially here, for us to be able to learn our culture.
Did Don have any questions?
Don, do you have any questions?
No, I'm, yeah, thank you. I appreciate them doing.
I want to echo what Dan said really quickly, like great job, great work. I mean, you guys are getting some really amazing experiences and like you said, tapping into your culture. So it's not just, you know, this experience of speaking, you're, you're able to really engage in who you are. And I, I think that is amazing. So, congratulations on all the work you guys have been doing. It's, it's really impressive. You were talking about drafting the ordinances and the resolution that got passed. So, those resolutions are specific just to Mashpee? Or, so like, I just want to understand. So like each tribal nation has their own set of ordinances. So you guys have developed the rights of nature ordinance for the Mashpee Wampanoag? Is that correct?
It's, I'm pretty sure it says the like northeastern woodlands.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure. But it takes, but Talia's a lot better than legal.
So, yeah, I mean tribal sovereignty and like the legal aspect is really, you know, a difficult concept, I guess, if you're not within that legal realm. But within tribal nations, we have a constitution. So the Mashpee Wampanoag tribe has a constitution. And underneath the constitution, we're able to do, you know, certain things as citizens and the tribal council gets their powers and so on and so forth within our courts and stuff like that. So within that, we create ordinances, which are laws. And resolutions basically are a first step to an ordinance. So it identifies the problem that you need to resolve. And so it's basically declaring that problem. So they declared the state of emergency for the herring. And it basically obligated the tribal council to, you know, put resources and attention and obligate them to certain things in order to accomplish us advocating for the, you know, enacting rights of nature for the herring. So I mean, a big goal within the NEA is to change the constitution, to put rights of nature within our constitution, like a lot of different countries have done. So, and you know, different tribal nations have done. So that's where we've been learning within America, how tribal nations are using rights of nature in order to, you know, protect the ecosystems around them and be able to exercise their tribal sovereignty through their jurisdiction, you know, by gaining authority of those resources because it's their Aboriginal right to do so. So it's this whole, you know, it's kind of spreading across America, but it started, you know, like in Ecuador and New Zealand, where they, you know, put rights of nature to different things that are culturally significant to them in order to protect them. Because it all comes from this concept, do, do trees have standing? So within, you know, legal realm, you have to prove that you have standing to, you know, sue somebody. Like, do you have financial or physical harm? Obviously, the regular, you know, American system doesn't identify trees and water and fish to have that same natural right as human beings. So this is basically turning our cultural value into that westernized concept within the legal realm and using our sovereignty in order to do so. So we use the resolution to kind of get the obligation to the tribal leaders, because they're the ones that create the laws. So the youth are kind of just spearheading it and drafting it for them. And then they create the law. And then with that, we use that for our partnerships and get resources to be able to protect the, the herring and things like that. And then with that, we try to gain more authority because obviously we have more resources than towns and stuff like that and able to work together, really. So to, just so we, because obviously the town is, knows the same sort of stuff that we do as far as the environment. And they're, you know, we're trying to partner right now with grants in order to clean up the rivers and stuff. So it's just in order to really get Mashpee to where we need it to get back to.
And one last question for each of you, well, two, I guess. One, what grade are you in? And two, does this make you want to kind of get into like government or policy? Like, you know, are you looking like, has this experience kind of made you start thinking about the future and where you might use some of these skills and talents that you're learning to help the tribe and help, you know, further this even more? Like, has that popped in your head at all?
Yeah. So, I'm a junior. And I think for like my whole career, like it's not, what I like really want to do is go into like government and stuff, but I definitely do want to still like be part of it kind of. And because I obviously do want to see a change and I just want Mashpee to be as best as it can be for our future generations. And yeah.
Yeah. No wrong answer. So, I'm just curious.
So, I'm in grade 11 and...
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're a ju, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm a junior, yeah.
Okay.
What was the question again?
Has it made you want to like go into policy or keep working in this type of, you know, like you don't necessarily have to go into it. You know, like Jersey said, you can still be a part of it. But I was just curious if it was something maybe career-wise you were thinking about as you looked forward.
I mean, it's intrigued me like more than like usual, like, like writing, writing that stuff and like seeing how it can like affect people or whatever. And seeing like the people that I know now, like I feel like, like law school might be like a good option if it was, like, it's one of my choices that I could pick out of like all the things that I want to do. Like, it's like another one that's like going on the chalkboard, like, maybe law, maybe not.
You know, you don't have to know now. You can always change, you know, you can always go back to that chalkboard later and check off another thing.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't kind of change it. I wouldn't say no. Like, it's not something I would do. I wouldn't choose as like my main career, but of course I would still do it. Kind of like how Talia's doing it. Maybe I could be like a youth advisor for this and like help the group when Talia doesn't want to do it anymore.
Again, thank you for presenting. It's fascinating to see what you guys are doing. And I appreciate you taking the time to share with us your hard work and your experience. And keep working, keep doing the good work and keep doing what you're doing. Because it's amazing to see what young people like you are accomplishing, not just for your tribe and your people, but for the rest of the town as well. So thank you very much. Picture.
One thing, your kids are welcome anytime.
Awesome.
To any of my events.
I can hold on on a stick.
There you go.
See? Great job. Thank you so much.
All right. And I see our next person is here. So if Ms. Charlie Jenkins would, and your family would like to come up to the table, I believe Superintendent DeBoer has a few words she'd like to share.
So, we, I'm gonna stand. Oh, it's my pleasure to be able to present tonight to Ms. Charlie Jenkins. And I know her family is here as well. I'm gonna read a little letter about you. I am proud to introduce the 2023 recipient of the superintendent's Academic Excellence Award, Mashpee Middle High School Senior, Ms. Charlie Jenkins. Charlie is the embodiment of a well-rounded student who has excelled academically, athletically, in co-curriculars and in service to the school and to our Mashpee community. Charlie is currently ranked number one out of 94 students at the Mashpee Middle High School, class of 24. She carries a weighted GPA of 105.6 and has received many academic awards. Charlie is involved in several co-curricular organizations and clubs. She is the president of the MMHS National English Honor Society and the vice president of the National Honor Society. She has been a member of the Mashpee Girls Soccer Team since 7th grade and has served as captain in the 23-24 Varsity Soccer Team and is a Girls Soccer South Shore League All-Star. She is also the president of the Mashpee Middle High School Key Club, the president of the Environmental Club, and a peer leader trained by the Anti-Defamation League. As president of the Mashpee Middle High School Environmental Club, Charlie has facilitated many community projects from beach cleanups to spearheading a tree planting event. Her passion for the environment and climate control has provided opportunities for her to serve as an ambassador to the Massachusetts Audubon Youth Climate Leadership Program and the Cape Cod Commission Climate Change Student Ambassador Program. Charlie has also assisted the Mass Audubon Statewide Youth Climate Leadership Program in organizing a statewide retreat to promote collaboration and communication between regional teams and in creating an onboarding process for the organization. In March of, in March, in, on March 15th of 2023, NOAA Administrator Dr. Richard Spinrad visited Mashpee Middle High School to discuss with students representing upper Cape high schools how climate change is affecting Cape Cod, how young people are taking action to address climate impacts, and what data tools and services students need from NOAA to be climate leaders. Charlie, as a junior at the time, took on a leadership role at this event by facilitating the students' discussion with Dr. Spinrad. On November 5th, Charlie led a Walk for Water fundraiser in Mashpee. All proceeds benefited the Thirst Project, a nonprofit organization that works with the support of young people to end the global water crisis by building freshwater wells in developing communities that need safe, clean drinking water. Charlie has balanced her academic, athletic, and extracurricular activities while being part of Mashpee's workforce. She has worked at Harvest Moon Farms, where just one of her duties was to facilitate farmers' markets, market trips. She has also been a paid intern at the Katuut Center for the Arts. After graduation, Charlie plans on continuing her studies in environmental conservation at a four-year private university. She has also applied to several, she has applied to several with her top three choices being Amherst College, Colby College, and Middlebury College. We are so very proud of and grateful for Charlie and all that she has accomplished and contributed to the Mashpee Public Schools. She is a role model of excellence for us all. Congratulations to Charlie and her family on receiving this outstanding achievement and recognition. Charlie is one of those people who lights up a room through her positivity and empathy, which is very true. And one thing we didn't capture on this was the fact that she has a beautiful singing voice and is often called upon to do the National Anthem at events. And she has an ability to influence her peers unlike others. So she just definitely has that it factor that we're very grateful that she journeyed through Mashpee and we got to share in that. So this is your recognition. So it says Certificate of Academic Excellence is being awarded to Charlie Jenkins, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. It's hereby awarded the Certificate of Academic Excellence. And then it says, and witness whereof, the seal of the association and the signature of the superintendent of schools are herein to affix. And so we choose one student every year. And so we are very happy to award it to Ms. Charlie Jenkins.
I was gonna take a picture. I don't really know what to say. Thank you so much.
Do any members would like, would you like to say anything to Charlie? This is her mom, her stepdad.
When do you sleep? So I, wow, incredible, incredible. So happy and excited to hear all you've done, what you need to do. She is a college graduate or Amherst College, let's get you in there. But congratulations. It's well deserved.
Thank you so much. Does Don have anything he wants to?
Don, any comments?
I just wish we had 1,650 more just like him.
Just like her. It's Charlie.
Oh, just like her. I'm sorry.
Well, congratulations, Mom and Dad. Clearly, you know, you've, you've done something good. Because Charlie, I mean, I see you in band. I was, I was like waiting and looking at her when the letter came out. I'm like, I know she does band and she sings.
I was just there, actually. That's why I was late. I was auditioning for all Cape schools. You gotta go. Okay. You got it.
So, you know, very impressive what you've been doing with, you know, clearly your free time. So, best of luck with everything and congratulations. Well, well deserved.
Thanks so much.
One other last comment I'll say about Charlie is that she, at least from my perception of her, is comfortable being who she is. Like she, one other student had, we talked about things at Mashpee Middle High School and how kids fit in or not. And his philosophy was, you do you, I do me. But, but Charlie is really, and I remember all the way back to Quashnet years, she is just a free spirit who is true to herself. Like, I love that about her. I hope for that to happen on, on your scholarship. So, it's a good quality to keep throughout life.
I always say Charlie's somebody I'd hang out with in real life.
I love that. Thank you.
Which I don't know if that's a, if you take that as a compliment.
No, I do, I do.
Good.
You gonna do a family picture?
Pictures with the school committee and we need pictures with family and a picture with you.
Tell me when you're gonna meet.
And just so you know, you'll be invited to dinner in March, usually down at Cape Tech, where they bring together all of the members.
I'll take it.
And Dawn, you're not.
These kids certainly are slackers. So not slackers.
Mr. T also texted you, just in reference.
We're in a dead zone in here, so it's all good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Night.
All right. Thank you. Um, all right, next on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes of October 18th, 2023. While entertaining a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes on from October 18th, 2023, as presented in the paper.
Thank you, Dan. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Dawn. Any discussion? Hearing none, Dan?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so the minutes are approved. All right, I see we have Ms. Roxanne here tonight to speak on behalf of the Tribal Education Department.
Weniki Sak, Wenyuanak, Natasuis Roxanne Mills Brown, Nuthomas Masipiat, Natay Falmath. And, um, this is, this is really gonna be boring compared to what just came before me.
Hardly, hardly, hardly.
But we'll, we'll give it a go here. So this is really an update as to what's gone on. It's, it's lengthy, but I think it kind of summarizes what has taken place and especially our state tribal education partnership grant ended September 30th. So we are going to attempt to carry on some of the components of that regardless of whether funding's there, um, because it has kind of defined who we are as a tribal education department, and we have partners with whom we've done a little bit of work and we would like to continue, uh, that work and grow. But, um, I'm gonna start out addressing the Native American Teacher Retention Initiative. It's a huge undertaking. And the purpose is that the absolute priority for this grant is to help the shortage of Native American educators and expand their impact on Native American student education. It must support teacher leadership models to increase the retention of effective, experienced Native American teachers who will assist in ensuring that Native American students gain knowledge and understanding of Native communities, languages, tribal histories, traditions, and cultures as outlined. Uh, the purpose of this prior, for the purpose of this priority, educator means an individual who is in an early learning educator, teacher, principal, or other school leader, specialized instructional support personnel, for example, a school psychologist, counselor, social worker, early intervention service personnel, paraprofessional, or faculty. So it's pretty broad. There's four objectives, four main objectives. Recruitment of four students per year, and that's, uh, college students, students going into college, um, students, that can be students coming into the public school LEAs with whom we partner. We're gonna begin a little bit late, um, with grades 11 and 12. This is a five-year grant, so if we can get them at grades 11 and forward, going forward, and even college students now, um, who are Native. One caveat to this is that for this, the purpose of this grant, and, um, it's not a usual thing of Office of Indian Education, is that Native American means a member of a federally recognized tribe. So that's a little bit different than what the, uh, most of their grants define Native American. So recruitment of, of students, uh, fight, we'll have financial incentives for them to participate, and we'll have an agreement that they'll sign that upon graduation, they'll apply to any of our partner districts, uh, much like, um, other, other teachers at, in the Mashpee District have done to this point. Another objective is interim college retention to include pre-service workshops, best practices in teaching Native students, um, to help keep them in, in their career field, but also to keep them in college. The third, uh, objective is leadership development with professionally designed workshops for them to acquire cultural competency. And we know that just because you are a Native or another ethnic group, you're not always, um, fully knowledgeable about the values and, and the cultural aspects of, of who you are. Let's see. Uh, part of this development is their agreement to work with their colleagues, whether it's in college, uh, teacher college, or whether it's on the job in helping to provide resources and supports for their, um, non-Native teachers as well. And the last objective is teacher placement and retention. And that again is to address the barriers to quality teacher preparation. It includes financial assistance with a commitment to apply to partner districts with higher concentrations of Native students, and continuation of in-service professional development, um, that will be available and accessible to them. We have two positions that are advertised now on our website. One is the Assistant Education Director and the other is a Program Manager, um, open until filled, if you know of anybody. And I don't believe you necessarily have to have a degree in education. They're more program management and project management types of, uh, positions. We have a new website that we're gonna, uh, do a test launch on, on December 5th. So if there's anybody here that would like to be a part of that test, let me know.
I see Consuelo's raising her hand.
Yes, Consuelo, good, good, thank you.
I'd be happy to as well, if you wanna send it. Not sure if the rest of the committee would.
Thank you. And we're working with smoke signals to do that, Stephen Peters and Deja as well. Some of the challenges, um, while the accomplishments are great, challenges continue to exist with identifying Native, Native youth who may not have parental consent to share student school data. Developing formal lines of communication and a professional approach to the work is also a challenge. Getting individuals to apply who, who come with, with specific skills and experiences is a challenge. The ability of the staff to balance direct services with the administrative aspects of, of all the projects has been challenging, due in part to getting bogged down in the day-to-day tasks and ensuring that all parts are moving as planned, but also due to the minimal, minimal number of Native contractors available to provide direct services. It has been left to tribal education staff to provide virtually all services, which is not a negative, but does impact the department's ability to plan and execute more effectively. So I'm gonna go on. So for this, uh, November, Native American Month, uh, we did, we were able to provide 21 biographies of Wampanoag individuals, uh, to be announced each morning at each of the three classroom buildings, and we entitled that honoring our Wampanoag community, the quiet warriors within. Um, these are not necessarily identified leaders, but they're individuals that keep our community going. We had classroom visits scheduled for next week, the 20th and 21st, and I think the Heron ambassadors are, uh, leading some of those presentations. So the American Indian Resilience in Education Grant, Talia presented, um, in June to a national audience with the Office of Indian Education, uh, project directors, and she presented on the pre-contact home site. Very well done. It was all done remotely by Zoom. I believe that the, um, the new Wii Q and the home site will be dedicated sometime in December, um, due to some aspects of it that need to be completed. Let's see, uh, Falmouth has completed a mural with the influence from Wampanoag students. There's a, a pathways program, and I apologize, I don't remember the name of the, of the student program, but it, it, um, it, there's a couple of Native students in that program, and, uh, it was a student-initiated project to, uh, paint the mural at the middle highs, at the high school level. We have tribal boys that will begin in January, and it's a hugely important, um, group here that Darius has undertaken to mentor. Um, it really kind of formalizes the principles and the teachings of our elders, in specific to, to, to provide a, a solid foundation for understanding what it means to be not just a Native person, but a Wampanoag person. It also helps our kids to explore and appreciate our culture and our ceremonies, um, and to navigate the community. And just the little bit that we were able to do last, last year, um, really made an impact on the students. One of the students we thought would become a future leader, and he may still actually move to, to the city, to Boston, and, um, it's kind of heartbreaking because, uh, we don't want to lose him. We don't want to lose touch. We're still looking for a facilitator for tribal girls. Um, the concepts come from, um, Daughters and Sons of Tradition, which are really, uh, prevention programs that are presented nationally, and tribes are able to, um, kind of interface their own values, beliefs, and cultures into aspects of these, of these programs. So, um, they are research-based, if you will. We're still discussing how to get the language in the, in the school for Native kids, and, we haven't given up on that. And you, you heard testimony today how impactful just having the language here was. Um, the whaling exhibit, um, is here through the November 20th, and I hope everybody gets a chance to look at that. There's another aspect to that, which is having students, and they can do it for their classroom work as well. Students do research on their family ties to these individuals because those men are related to many of us, and, um, to be able to track their travels and understand where they were way back then, um, is, I think, very humbling and important, uh, to our, to our future. Um, under that grant, we have the STEM education, um, which helps to sponsor the, um, rights of Heron and the ambassadors, although the pioneers are really kind of the driving force there. They also, um, uh, this grant also, um, provides funding for staffing and interns for the Preserving Our Homeland Summer Program for the middle school kids. Right now, we're, we've got like four or five students already, um, being provided tutoring, uh, most from Mashpee, but I think we may have one from Falmouth as well. We met with the Sandwich Superintendent and his rep, administrative representatives, um, which was assisted by a group called Sandwich for All. And so we were able to get the superintendent actually to engage, and, um, right now, he's working on the partnership agree, agreement, understanding the 506 forms, and we're scheduled for a presentation to his staff in January. Let's see here. Uh, this grant has been a gift to us, um, and our youth, and it's, has inspired our education team and our people to more thoughtfully consider the holistic needs of our youth, culturally, spiritually, academically, and socially. We're up for the challenge and we look forward. I mean, it's really kind of drawn our community together. We have our chief, we have our culture keepers, um, who really, I think, have drawn respect from our kids, and in this day and age, it's, it's a, it's a great thing when you can bring those two things together. Our STEP grant, so this is just a little synopsis of what has taken place. We have the 10-week after-school series, and those are posted on a YouTube channel. So if you, if you type in and Google, um, "Ashby Wampanoag Tribe Education YouTube", it'll bring you up to the, uh, to the, uh, video taping of, of those 10, 10 presentations, and that was done by Deja. We recruited two teachers, um, one of whom, well, two teachers to this point, um, intentionally, and that was done on the premise, somewhat the same premise as this Native, um, teacher recruitment grant, that we provided some financial assistance, but we also had them sign an agreement to apply to the districts that we worked with, and both applied to Mashpee, um, and actually were hired. One has since left and come to the tribal school, but, uh, one is, is there for the first year this year. And, and I do have to say Mashpee recruited, the district recruited, um, a Native, another Native teacher, um, actually related to Kitty. So we're really excited because I think we, we haven't yet met her formally, so we'd like to be able to do that and work with her. We've done, um, let's see, the whole school address as far as Native American Month and performances. I know Cameron did performances. We developed that 7th grade course, Wampanoag History and Contemporary Life, and I think the, the title of the class morphs, but that's fine. The content's the most important piece. The first year, the tribe contracted with her, education contracted with the, uh, instructor, and this year, the district contracted with the instructor. So that's a good thing, and it shows, you know, growth and commitment, and I appreciate that. We did two presentations at the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Superintendents. We did two presentations with the Martin Luther King All Cape Cod Students of Color Conferences, um, this year and the prior year. We developed the Speakers Bureau, um, and that's on our website. We did orientation for new staff and the convocation for two years with Mashpee School District, and for the first time, we did an orientation for Barnstable staff on October 6th, which was a professional development day, was kind of last minute, but we had to get in there, and we did. So that was, it, 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 it was worthwhile. Part of the out, outgrowth of, um, Native Education Council was an outgrowth of the work that we began with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with Sarah Slaughterbeck's, um, assistance, and the work that we did with Jerry Lassos. And it's comprised of all acknowledged tribes indigenous to Massachusetts, including the Stockbridge Muncie, they're a part of that also, and they're, they now reside in Wisconsin. They were relocated from Massachusetts, um, but they still remember their roots and have ties to, to the state. We have our tribal culture keepers working to reframe, and I'm gonna use that word again, the social studies framework with a, with a, uh, with a group called Educurious that has contracted with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we're looking at the social studies framework, grades three through five, um, and we get an update on that, the progress of that. And we get an update on that, the progress of that tomorrow via Zoom. They sent it out to identified teachers, and I imagine they've gotten some feedback by now. But my main question is, have our culture keepers kept up and, and continued to participate at a level that is impactful? I'll hear more about that tomorrow. We're hoping to revive the education programming in math and reading to supplement and strengthen elementary skills, grades three through six, using the Alpha 2 Learning Management System. So, we're hoping to be able to get some teachers, which has been the biggest challenge, to get teachers to help after-school tutoring. But it's not really tutoring, it's actually instruction. So, that kind of, that's kind of an update of what has gone on in the STEP grant, and we hope to continue that work with or without the funding. So, thank you guys very much. I appreciate you guys, and I think you've really, you've really influenced other districts to step up, and that's important. So, thank you.
One quick question, the Whaling Exhibit, where is that again?
I think it's in the Indian Ed Room.
In the Indian Ed.
It's in the open area in the Mashpee Middle High School, outside of the Indian Ed Room. So, that big open area.
Okay.
They're really nice, nicely done. Yeah. We did some panels with a lot of the history of that. Did that with smoke, so.
Can't wait to see it.
Yeah, beautiful.
Well, thank you for the update, appreciate it. It's some really amazing work that you guys are doing, and I'm glad we're able to collaborate and support. And, you know, we look forward to continue to support, because this is very important. You know, as we heard the two students, and all the others that are in our district, I know it's very important for them to feel like they're a part of this district as much as everyone else. So, thank you for being open and working with us.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking. All right. We do not have, I don't see you here from Andrew, and it was out. So, I guess we're going to skip our student advisory update, but I do believe next, I don't have the meeting schedule in front of me, but next month?
December 20th.
Yeah, so we do meet with them next month.
Oh, the small group, sorry, that's a little.
No, we meet, yeah, we meet with the student advisory.
The sixth.
School. The one with the student advisory?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So, December 6th is our meeting with them, is the full committee, and their full committee as well. So, we'll hopefully catch up with them. And now, I will turn it over to Superintendent DeBoer for her update.
So, this school year, as with every school year in the past, goes by very quickly. And I will again commend our students and staff. I say this often, but the highlight of any of my days is always going in the classrooms and seeing some of the fabulous lessons that our teachers have planned and are executing, and really talking to our students about what they're looking for, what their experiences are. And so, I just think we have a really great student body and a very hardworking and dedicated staff. We have all of our building leaders here tonight, and they are also very hardworking. We are soon approaching the break for the Thanksgiving, so next week is only two days for students and staff. The terms are ending at the middle high school, and I'll let the principal speak when they have a chance, there on the quarter system. Our sports season is coming to a close, and I know we have A.D. Traveri here. I'm hoping he'll be able to come up and at least highlight the various teams that made it to various levels within the tournament play. I think the only varsity game left is Thanksgiving Day Game, which is traditionally played against Sandwich. It is home this year, and I believe it's at 10:00 a.m. So, all of you should plan to attend that. That's a wonderful experience. In terms of professional development, we do have, you know, generally a half-day every month. This is really valuable time for our teachers. I know, and I really appreciate what our families do to support this, because I know it is a disruption for childcare. But it is an opportunity for collaboration among our teachers. So, generally, what happens, or what happened on the 6th, is Dr. Khaleesi Warnham came back to continue her monthly work with a group at the middle high school, and a group at the Quashnet School, our departments at the high school also. On that particular day, I think it was that day, Principal McSweeney's here. But did they not do the CPR, AED, and first-day training? That happened for a bulk of staff members as well. What was great about this particular training, and we do want to acknowledge our district nurse coordinator, Stacy Schackel. She is trained to provide that PD. But this year, we also had members of the Red Cross Student Group from the Mashpee Middle High School who were there in the afternoon to support that process. So, it was really great to have student leadership there as well. And that club has really grown in membership and in their impact on their peers. And I just want to again emphasize that we greatly value these half-days. We greatly appreciate that the school committee supports them, and that through the budget, the town also supports it. Because it is very hard to get the work done that we need to get done without that time. A lot of it is spent revisiting, or at least on the 6th, revisiting the data analysis that took place on our full PD day in October. And just that opportunity for grade-level collaboration, and sometimes it's, it's vertical collaboration across schools. So, that was the 6th. You have an enrollment sheet in the packet, which shows 1,455 students. Does anyone have any questions on the data that's presented there? Dawn, you good? I assume so.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. You also have personnel updates. So, we have two paras who have started, Erin Zawaro, who is a Quashnet School para-professional, and Lisa Sawicki, excuse me, has started as a KCC para-professional. I will also highlight, although it's not on here, we do have recently hired our varsity basketball coach, Jordan Rizendis. And just reading a quick piece about Jordan, and it was an absolute pleasure to meet him the other day, when he kind of has the final interview with me. He has previously coached in Wareham, and he has played professionally in Europe. And he has quite a story of his own personal journey through schooling. And we are also lucky enough that he has taken the remaining, or one of the remaining open positions as a para-professional at Mashpee Middle High School. So, he starts actually in both roles as the para and the varsity basketball coach on the Monday after Thanksgiving, I think the 27th. But he is really an amazing young person, and I think he'll be a wonderful addition to our sports program, as well as our school culture during the day.
Will the parents, because we did get a couple of letters expressing concern about that, are we, like, they're, they're going to be, because tryouts are starting soon too, correct? I know there was.
I think, don't those start the Monday after Thanksgiving?
Okay. So, I'm just wondering if.
It's.
We need to circle back to those parents, I guess, let them know?
Well, I, we will be, I'm communicating about the hire in my Friday communication. I can specifically respond back. I would imagine that our athletic director has as well, because those, it's a pretty tight-knit community. So, are you, do the, do the team members know their, about the new coach?
We had a sign-up meeting yesterday. Worried about kids sign up, so the numbers, and then before we start the season, or as we start, we have the, we have tryouts.
Yeah.
So, once tryouts are finished, we have parenting as well.
I'm just thinking, we had, because we had, I think, two parents specifically reach out with concerns about it. So, I guess I just want to make sure we're, if you guys are communicating, or if we should communicate, I just tried to think of closing that loop on the communication with those two parents that expressed, you know, their comments and concerns. So, I just want to, I don't want to double communication, but I guess I just want to make sure if somebody is, whether it's us, or I, I have no, either way.
I can make sure to reach back out to them. I'm aware of one, I'm going to double check on the second one.
Because the gentleman who came last meeting.
Mr. Barron.
Mr. Barron, and I believe I forwarded Andrea Joya was the other parent.
Okay, I will make sure we connect. And the only other resignation from the Mashpee Middle High School was Jeremy McLean from his para role, but he was licensed as a teacher and has secured a teaching position with another district. And so, we're happy for Jeremy. I guess he won't be going to DC this year. He was a great chaperone. Okay, so I don't know, we do have our principals here. If you'd want to share a snippet or two about something that's going on in your school, why don't we start with the middle child?
I was going to say, Mary Kate, does that feel good, that you're not the middle child Welcome to your new role.
Yeah, thanks. I definitely have a few things that I can share. I just wrote down some notes. Yeah, so we had an awesome presentation from the dance group from the Wampanoag, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe yesterday. I think it was really impactful on the kids. They were totally zoned in, and it was really impressive, and it was awesome. I think we had eight students from the Quashnet School who participated. So, I got a bunch of videos and pictures, check them out on the blog. Also, I just want to take an opportunity to remind everyone that the pasta dinner is December 14th, so please plan ahead for that. It's an awesome community event. All the pasta is provided by the school. Come, eat. There's some other stuff that'll go on, like the raffle. Our fourth graders had an awesome time this week. They went to the Young People's Concert at the, at Barnstable High School, put on by the Cape Cod Symphony. They do that every year. I've done it as a fourth-grade teacher, and I know how great it really is. It's really geared towards kids, which I think is a rare find when it comes to classical music. So, that's awesome. And then the other, really the big thing I want to talk about is we are starting our No Place for Hate Initiative here at the Quashnet School. We, all the teachers went through a training. This is an organization put on by the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League. It was tied into professional development that the teachers went through, provided by Dr. Hanscom to start the year. And we are moving forward to try and, it's a designation you earn, you will become a No Place for Hate school. And essentially, the main way to earn that designation is to put on three events. We are working towards, and I just put something out on the blog a couple of weeks ago to let parents know that we're starting this. And we are working towards, hopefully, our first event is going to be the half-day in January, and we're going to spend the whole half-day focused on that. We have a committee of adults right now, and we are in the stage of adding students to that committee, because it's really supposed to have student voice. It looks, at the elementary level, it's really about, and then, of course, we get into middle school, our sixth graders, but it's about kindness, you know, being kind to each other. We can really include the Falcon Five in that. It's not something we have to start from scratch on. We do so much of it in Mashpee already. So, we're going to really integrate a lot of the stuff we have here already at Quashnet School, at the Kindness Week. And, and then we'll have three events. And a lot of the stuff isn't, you want the whole school's involved, but a lot of the activities actually happen in the classrooms, there's discussion around it. So, that first day, we'll pull everyone together in the gym, and they will go back and do activities in their classrooms, so they can have a more intimate setting.
Nice.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any volunteers for next?
I was going to say, rock, paper, scissors.
Let's go with Big Sister.
While she's coming up to No Place for Hate Designation, we're actually doing that at all three buildings, and as a district. And that started last year. We started the process, but I just wanted to make sure. I'm, I'm so excited. Mr. Switzer has come in and taken it on and really run with it. So, working with the kids on the half-days, really focusing, spending that entire morning with the kids about, around this is going to be awesome and really impactful, I think.
Are there any other districts that currently hold a designation?
Uh, yes, there are definitely a bunch.
I believe Falmouth is one.
Yeah, it's the Anti-Defamation League of New England, it's one of their programs. We also are part of their peer leader. We have peer leaders at the high school, I think Charlie is one of them. But we, yeah, there are tons of them.
I, I was trying to add, because, so I did meet with two members of No Place for Hate. They have people like Dr. Anderson St. dedicated to the Northeast region. There are about, there are 8, 200 schools right now across the country. What they put on there, about 800 schools, I think, not a lot of state-run schools. Thank you.
Good evening. I think between Superintendent DeBoer's presentation and Roxanne's presentation, most of my things have already been said. I will go through them quick, quickly. As we enter into the most wonderful time of the year, report cards will be issued tomorrow. We want to make parents aware of that. All AP testing was ordered today for our students that will be involved with AP testing. Native American Month, we have been reading those quotes every day at the high school. Fall season, with the exception of the Thanksgiving Day Football Game, has concluded for the fall. The winter season will kick off the Monday after Thanksgiving. MCAS retesting has, is taking place this week. We've identified an eighth-grade student to represent Mashpee in the 351 Project, which is a project that's run in the state. So, that student has been identified. And other than that, all is well at Mashpee Middle High School. Thank you for the opportunity for this update.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Next.
Baby sister.
Hi, everyone, it's good to see you. Just a couple of quick updates. We are very excited to have firefighter Lenny come. He's meeting with all of the students and bringing wonderful firefighter hats, and the kids are just thrilled to see him and learn all about fire safety this month. Last, last couple of weeks, we also met with all of the bus drivers, and the students in K1 and 2 had an opportunity to learn about bus safety. And it wasn't just about bus safety, it was really reinforcing and making a connection with our Falcon Five, and how their behavior in school also connects with the behavior on the bus. And it was just a really great partnership with the bus company, and we were able to also put our voice check signs on the bus, as well as the Falcon Five. And it was a wonderful connection, and I really thank Beth for doing that. She's our BCBA, and she just did a fabulous job connecting with the students and the bus driver. So, a special little shout-out to her, outstanding. And the PTO just finished up our book fair, which was quite successful. And it was nice this year to have two events where families could come. We had a Saturday event on November 4th, which was great. And one of the grandmothers came up to me, and she's just so excited. She goes, "I, I just love this, that I could come this year." So, it was really terrific. And she works in Forestale Elementary, and she's like, "We're going to have to do this on a Saturday." So, I'm like, "Yes, Mashpee." They also did a family bingo night last week, which was another opportunity to come to the book fair. So, that was great. And all of those proceeds really do support students directly, books going right into their hands and into the classroom. So, it was outstanding. And as Principal Switzer said too, we had Cameron Greendale come with dancers and drummers, and students were completely mesmerized and impressed. And it just really brings the awareness of the Wampanoag community and the pride to our Wampanoag students. So, we really thank them for that. And I did want to mention the Professional Development Day as well, so thank you for bringing that up, Superintendent DeBoer. Our teachers really benefit so much from that half-day training. The new math program reveal is, it's just getting used to the technology, the platform. It is such important learning and an opportunity to go through the pacing and instructional strategies within the book. The resources are just tremendous, and you need that time. So, our teachers really benefited from that. But I also just need to say to parents, how important those half-days are, because they're, it's an academic day, it is not a pass, and we need all our students in school even on half-days. So, so important. So, please keep that in mind. We have about 10 a year, so if we take a pass on those half-days, we're missing 10 days of school. So, keeping that in mind, please. We also just, time does pass quickly. December 1st is the end of the first term for the elementary schools. It's coming up quickly. And our annual Giving Tree Event is scheduled for December 8th. So, we're really looking forward to that celebration as well. That's it. December 8th. So we're really looking forward to that celebration as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see that we have, did our athletic director leave?
He looks that way.
Okay. Well, you do have his report in there, and I will do my best. I hope I don't miss anything, and maybe Ashley knows some. But I was just going to point out, of the fall teams at the Varsity Level, those that did qualify, sorry, qualify for postseason tournament play. So the football team, girls soccer, boys soccer, and volleyball, all qualified. And, you know, particularly with our volleyball program, that's a relatively sort of infancy-level program. And so they made it to the tournament and actually won their first-round game. So I think that's really a sign of growth, and there's a lot of interest in that particular sport. And like I already said, the only game left at the Varsity Level is the Thanksgiving Day game. And we also have our outreach coordinator, Consuelo Carroll here. So her report is in here as well, but I think she, hopefully, will talk a little bit about the pop-up shop at Mashpee Commons, maybe about the bus and any other initiatives. She's a very creative outside-the-box thinker.
Well, thank you very much. Am I loud enough?
You are.
So you do have the report. I won't go, I'll just cover a few highlights. So in terms of community engagement, we did get our students out for, the Mashpee Golf Team came out and helped the Mashpee Scholarship Foundation Trust during their golf tournament. We also had the Mashpee Middle School, High School Band led the Halloween Parade at Mashpee Commons. And then the DPW asked us if we wanted to take on recycle, deposit recyclings at the transfer station. And the woodshop students put together a bin that's been delivered to the transfer station. This weekend will be the third weekend we're doing it. We're just trying to figure out the best methodology for doing this. We have to say thank you to the family members or people that come, and they have presorted their bags of things. It makes life a lot easier than if they just put individuals in. But we're working on other systems to make it smooth. The goal is to have boosters sort of manage it. Teams can sign up to do the redemptions. The information we got from the VFW, who was previously doing it, is that it's between $300 and $500 worth a week of money that you raise. So we're working with the boosters to have teams sign up to do that.
The boosters isn't just teams, though, right? Are other clubs able to participate in that as well?
Yes, teams and clubs.
And band and chorus and...
Absolutely. And I spoke with, yes. And I spoke with boosters last night, and they are also open, if there are open weeks, that other organizations that are maybe not part of the boosters. So if there's like a class that's not part of boosters, or maybe if the K-kids want to sign up, they're gonna be available to sign up for those weeks.
I'm just making sure it's not just, because boosters are all clubs.
Yes, clubs and...
Clubs and sports.
Yes, it's a broad assortment of people. And then also, we are, the, working with the Cooperative Extension, they were awarded a grant, and they will be helping us build a Everybody Eats Cultural Garden at the Mashpee Middle High School. There will be a farmer through the Health Ministries that will be sort of farming. So a lot of those everyday things will be taken care of. But we're hoping it leads to additional learning opportunities for our students. And we are also in the process of trying to get an additional grant called the Fresh Grant that would just have, we could expand the farm itself. We could bring the food into the high school, and Food Service would deliver it. It would give us opportunities for learning with nutrition, food sovereignty, environmental. So we're going after that, too. But we are at a minimum, starting with the Everybody Eats Cultural Garden. And then this week, the counselors all got together and looked at the resources that we have on our website. And we are, they wanted to put all the resources on one page. So we're gonna change the way it is on the website right now, create one page, put it on the district, and then there'll be links to the other schools. So that's one of the changes we'll be doing this month, as well as creating a DEI page, too. Then in terms of volunteer engagement, we've really had a great start to the school year. We've had volunteers really across the board in all of the schools. We had the Read To Me Program start, which always has a lot of hours. We've had individuals that are giving a lot of time through art programs, STEM programs. They're coming in weekly, the library. And then the robotics tournament, the number of people that, you know, work to support that is really amazing. Amanda Howe does a lot by getting that team of people together, and then we add a few additions. Then the We Are Mashpee Store. So excitement, we've started, we have a pop-up shop for November and December. It's in Mashpee Commons right now. It's, hours are gonna be Friday from 9:00 to 4:00, Saturday from 10:00 to 6:00, and Sunday from 11:00 to 5:00. It is open for business, and we're really excited about this opportunity. Appreciate the Commons giving us the opportunity to go in there. And hopefully, you know, we'll get to, again, share all the wonderful things that our students create and make in that location. We also just found out that we will be moving forward with the Spiritware Bus. We, yes. So that, we're gonna be talking with the tech school and see if they can help us out with the interior. We have to find some people to help us out with the exterior of the bus, but one thing at a time. And then also, we are, there's a catalog right now, a small sort of online version of the We Are Mashpee Store. We're in the process of creating a much larger one that would have all the items that are in the store. And that's a joint project with the marketing classes, as well as with the students that work in the store. And that seems like the biggest highlights. I don't know. There any questions?
Pretty good. We're still not at 1,000 followers on YouTube page. We gotta promote this YouTube page.
Yeah, so, not a problem.
No, I know.
I mean, it is, you know what, it's just hard. I don't manage the YouTube page.
Yeah.
The kids manage the YouTube page. And I'm not saying that if I managed it, we'd be at 1,000, because that wouldn't really just happen. But that is something that I could maybe work with them more to make sure that they're promoting, you know, putting an action step at the end.
You know, more content even, you know, maybe it's, because I know there's a couple different, I know like, sports have, I don't know, I see things on different places.
Well, sports is a little different. It is run through a different system, and it comes on like automatically at the, in the gymnasium, and then they have some things out on the field. And that is not part of the Mashpee Falcon media. Is that what you're talking about?
I think it meant more like, I saw like the football team introduction video, but that like, I don't know if that lives in the same place.
That was done through Mashpee TV, so I think it's on there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm wondering, how do we maybe get some of that in house, so that it ends up on our YouTube channel? No offense, Mashpee TV. So that we can build our YouTube channel a little bit and get the kids that connection with Mashpee TV, too. I guess that's what I, I don't know. Because I just, I know Mashpee has always had a really strong AV, like, connection. And, I mean, I think at one point, we had students who won an Emmy, and it'd be kind of cool to see Mashpee students at that level again someday.
Well, I mean, in terms of the Falcon YouTube channel, we have at least 600-plus kids at Mashpee Middle High School who, when it comes to being home room time, should be required to sign up as a follower of that channel.
And we also have, we also have a lot of teachers, too.
Yes, teachers.
But I guess then the question, too, is, is YouTube the right, I mean, if kids aren't using the YouTube, should they be using the Instagram? Like, you know, I guess maybe that's another question. I guess I'm just putting out on the table to think about, because I don't know if YouTube's the thing for something, you know, like...
No, it's still a thing. It's one of the top social media channels.
Well, I know that, but I'm thinking like, what the kids in the classes are utilizing, you know what I mean?
They do use a lot with YouTube, but isn't it, once we hit 1,000 followers, we can livestream?
That is correct.
So regardless, you know, okay, compliance, sign up, and then we will create something that they will go more towards.
Just throwing points out to think about.
No, that's fine. We can start another campaign.
Yeah.
Just a thought, I, my other field, we love to use this thing called contingency management, which is incentivizing opportunities for folks to engage in certain intervals. So I'm wondering, you know, with the fact that we have some connection to the We Are Mashpee Stores, an opportunity to do a little workaround there, where if, you know, there's...
500, the 500 subscriber, you know, whoever's subscriber number 500 gets, yeah, they get like the Mashpee sweatshirt.
No, we can definitely do that. In the past, we've done a discount, and if you signed up to be part of the We Are Mashpee Instagram or Facebook, you got a discount. So we can do that specifically for the YouTube page. That's fine. We can add that in. Not a problem.
Just trying to get that live streaming, because I think it's really important.
Yeah, I agree.
Helpful. And I know the kids work hard on what they're putting on that channel, so just gonna make a shameless plug for it.
Okay, I think it's great. They do work really hard, and they do a really great job, so.
Is it okay if I have a comment and question?
Yes, please.
So, super excited about the bus, as a bus nerd myself and transportation person.
Okay.
Yeah, woo, we're in Mobile. So that's really exciting. I'm hopeful that that gets out on the road. And then you talked about how we're gonna be adjusting kind of the community resources that are available through the website and the platform for the avenue for that. Is there a particular kind of database that the team is working off of to assess which resources end up on that, like the county or any of the other already pre-established databases?
I don't totally know how to answer that question. It's really the counselors that were working on that together. So I left the decision up to them. They reviewed the resources that are currently on the website. They felt that those were overall good. They were gonna review some additional resources that they thought maybe were missing and should be added. And then one of the stipulations, or one of the comments we were gonna have on the page was just that resources are often changing and updating. So it's really important to contact your counseling department at your school in order to get the best and most up-to-date information. But if you have information that you think is really important to families, I would love to add it. We can certainly have the counselors review it.
Just to piggyback off of that, is this something maybe that the school councils could discuss, you know, at the school level with principals, to see if they have ideas of resources as well as the counselors? Because I know, you know, we think about what types of needs counselors provide, but the parents that are on, and the teachers that are on the school councils may also have things outside of that as well, you know, to Dan's point, that might not be in the, that might not be in the immediate focus of the counselors, but might bring a different perspective. So I don't know if that's something that the principals might want to bring up at their next school council meeting and forward that information on. I don't know how frequently the school councils are meeting, but...
I think they're monthly. But I think once the counselors have developed like their first draft of this revised page, it could be something that is shared with all three principals and us. And that way, we'd have an opportunity to see if there were things that, you know, we want to make sure we add. We want to make sure we have tribal resources on there. We want, there are a lot of connections that we want to make sure are there.
Yeah, that's easy to do. And in my mind, a website is always a living document, so it's always updating and changing. So it'd be easy to sort of start with where the counselors are, and then take that additional information and add.
Just trying to bring in some more of that, you know, based on past meetings we've had, where we've heard people comment about, you know, making sure the resources are there.
And inclusive of, you know, alternative cultural norms or communities that we typically don't kind of align with.
Did Dawn have any questions?
Dawn, do you have any questions?
Comments?
The only comment that I was gonna, I was just thinking about was in regard to volunteers, and just if you're able to put out something to your volunteer base.
So Dawn, you're kind of...
I have no idea what you're saying, Dawn.
So probably the last minute of what you said was very difficult to understand. I don't know if you're like, where you are, if you're buffering a little bit, but something to do with volunteers and communicating to them, what did you want?
Can he type it in the chat?
Oh, you can type it. Can you type it in the chat?
Can you, can you hear me now?
No, you're still doing that sort of staccato thing.
All right. I'll follow it up at the next meeting. It's not time since.
You're good, you're good right now, if you want to try again.
Okay, so my only request was, if it was possible, for the volunteer requests, that there be a calendar that could be sent out well in advance to let people have an opportunity to kind of juggle schedules if they still want to participate in the volunteer opportunities that get requested.
So...
Did you hear that?
Yes, I did. And I'm happy to send out, I've been trying to send a monthly newsletter out. On the website, there's a link and a page that shows all the current opportunities we have available. But I don't have it in a calendar form, so...
Are people able to sign up from that, though?
Yes.
They are? Okay.
Yes. It depends on the, what volunteer opportunity is, but...
Does the school committee get that monthly, or is it only your...
They've only been doing volunteers, so I can add the school committee.
The school committee, please?
Yep.
They're sort of the largest group of volunteers in terms of time.
Yeah. That's true. Should I add your hours in?
Please add them.
And honestly, Consuelo, thank you for what you do. It's a lot of work.
You definitely helped get the message of what our district is doing and at our, and actually, I'll talk about it at our shareup, but in case you weren't here, we did have a member of the community who attended the first virtual session and talked about how he now, like, he's been able to see what the school does. And I think that's because of your efforts as outreach coordinator. So thank you very much.
Glad. Thank you.
Okay, so next in my section is the superintendent's draft FY25 budget narrative, which is in your packet. This is sort of the first go-through. This is also a living document. It eventually becomes the school committee's budget narrative. So just to quickly breeze through it, you have the cover page. There's a table contents. Again, wanting to make sure we highlight our portrait of a graduate. We have our Native American graduates there from last year. Page three is an overall summary by school of sort of what makes each school a little bit special. And then up at the top is the district summary. Page four is sort of a meteor page in terms of messaging, and I would want to emphasize on paragraph three. I'm gonna actually read it. It says, "At this time, we are requesting $25,434,353 be appropriated by the Town of Mashpee for the Mashpee Public Schools FY25 budget. This amount, a 3.99% increase over last year's appropriation, incorporates an offset of $757,228 from school choice program funds, and includes $50,000 in FY25 technology capital requests. If the Town of Mashpee approves the technology capital request, $50,000 will be removed from the budget, reducing the FY25 requested appropriation to $25,384,353, which is a 4.23% increase over last year's appropriation." Just emphasize for everyone out there that this is a lengthy process in developing this budget that starts in March of '23. It does start at the teacher level with their gathering a list of sort of requirements. The principals review that and submit a budget in terms of the operating side for their school. The personnel side is very specific by people that we know are going to be part of the district at that time. So there are a lot of known components to that piece, and then there are always some unknowns as well. Then we, as sort of a leadership team in central office, go over the budget, and we meet with each of the building principals. And line by line, we question requests that they've made, and, you know, whether we agree or move things around. So I just want everyone to know that it is a very intentional, well-thought-out budget that goes down to really every single item and every single dollar. item and every single dollar being looked at and determined to be necessary to maintain the programming that we want for our students. It also does assume, and as most people know, the facility side of our operation is under the DPW, which is part of the town budget. It does get charged back to us for Ashley's end-of-the-year report, but assumed in, in our budget is that the DPW will continue to put money in their budget that keeps our schools very healthy. And so what we learned through the COVID-19 pandemic are good practices that we expect to remain in place, which is the MERV-13 filters, hand sanitizer, sanitizing wipes, disinfectant, and added new this year because we found out that we were having a problem is batteries for touch-free sinks and toilets because they pretty well reach their life and the children are saying, you know, nothing's coming out. So that is something we need to make sure we plan however many years that works. So anyway, that information is on there. And obviously, as the school committee reads through this and we continue to analyze pieces, we can change anything within this text that you want. The next two pages focus on our Plan for Success. This particular FY25 budget actually is representative of the work we will be doing in the final year of the Plan for Success, which kind of blows my mind that we've already four years almost into it. And so we will, part of next year's school year work will be revisiting our Portrait of a Graduate to make sure that there, it is the way we want it to because that somewhat is a living document. And then we will be gathering stockholder, stakeholders as well, stockholders maybe, but anyway stakeholders to, again, work and reflect upon this particular Plan for Success and develop a new one for the next four years beyond that. Page seven highlights the fabulous group of school committee members and their terms, and we have Andrew Kelly there as well. And then we have our student advisory committee members pictured and the organizational chart for this year, current organizational chart of the district. Page eight shows sort of the budget process, which I talked about a little bit. There are dates in the middle section that sort of flows the whole process. Some of the dates are not quite finalized yet. And then there's a little reference to the charter that guides our, this process, the public hearing and submission of the budget to the town manager. We do have to note on December 12th, at I believe it's nine o'clock, is when we will be presenting our budget and reviewing the budget with the town manager. Generally, there's a member or two of the school committee who joins us at that event. On page nine, it talks about a little bit about what the budget ensures. And I will say the first bullet there should say it's year four of the Mashpee Plan for Success. I just noticed that this evening. What you'll see in the middle are revenue sources, which, and I want to give a shout out to our director of finance, Ashley Lopes, because a lot of the number sections of this, I thank you, Ashley, for updating and putting in as well. So it's definitely a partnership in creating this document. But you'll see the FY25 revenue sources, total grants, and these are projections, but 800,000. School Choice Fund program, program funds that we're projecting to use, which remember, we use a year in arrears. So that generally, that is a known number. The budget allocation from the town is the $25,434,353. And that, the chapter 78, we have it as last year's. It's not going to go below last year's, but we don't know quite yet what that will be. And is that confirmed around March or January?
Well, the initial amount of January.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's after, just for the public's knowledge, that's after we submit our budget. So
Yes.
we submit our budget prior to knowing what the state will give us, but it will never be less than the amount that is present.
Historically, yes. Good, held harmless. It's, the chapter 78 is based on enrollment. We do have to planning enrollment here in Mashpee, but the way they fund education is that the state's.
Thank you. And related to that, if you look back on the previous page, January 3rd is the public hearing on this budget where I will present and, you know, use slides and all of that. And then there's a two-week period. And on January 17th is when the school committee will vote on their budget. Sometimes the number does change. And then it's a quick turnaround. It's due to the town manager the following day. And hopefully they'll, we will have excellent communication from now until then so that we understand and are all on the same page between the schools and the town. Then on page 10, you see the breakdown of the FY25 personnel budget, and it does show it against last year's appropriation. We have provided explanations for any percentage increase that looks high or mostly high. And you'll see the rationale there. I will say that we generally know which retirements we have. And then we sort of budget where we're going to hire potentially a replacement. But this budget reflects hiring from this year where we have brought in many seasoned, skilled teachers slightly higher than might have been anticipated. So when you look at that, you see that, the jump there. But the overall increase on the personnel side is 4.34%. That pictured next is shown below, which I probably should label them, but they are the superintendent student advisory council members. And that is a group of two students from grade seven through 12 that meets with Dr. Hanskem and myself. And actually, Director of Finance Lopes was in the mix last time. And it just gives us a chance to really hear directly from students what changes they'd like, what struggles they have. And hopefully we take action to fix things for them or celebrate with them. The next page 11 is the same presentation, but it's the operational expenses side. And again, we've tried to describe or give an explanation for any of those increases that look somewhat alarming. And we did meet, which is later on, but we did meet with the finance working group and went over this document as well and explained those. But any questions you have is, when we get done, you're welcome to ask us. And then we have our robotics team from last year. There's various data charts there, the pie charts comparing this year to last year. And the picture at the bottom represents the joint meeting that we had this year with the tribal council. Then there's data on the student enrollment, which is pretty well projected to be, I guess stagnant, I guess stable. Stable sounds so much better. Stagnant sounds like bad water. Anyway, and then you see the, the total teachers, the full-time equivalent teachers. This budget does not include the addition of any new full-time equivalent members. In fact, as sort of a global look in terms between all three schools, we may be reallocating some of our personnel resources. And then just the back page, which shows the rate of budget growth and actual expenditures year to year up through FY23 because that's the only known data we have at this point. The last sheet, which is in the packet, just sort of shows the same information. One thing to point out, because I was, when I read the paragraph about the budget, you know, when we take the 50,000 out that's going to CIP, you would think that the percentage would go down. It's like a little bit misleading number in the sense that if you, but on this one, you can clearly see that the previous year, we had more money in CIP that had been built into that budget. So then when that came out, so that's where it's like not necessarily going below the 3.99 because it's when you compare the growth from the year before, if that makes sense.
In the CIP meetings, those happen in the, in, just again, for clarifying.
We don't have a date on that yet.
In January, again, after we've submitted.
Yeah, they, they Yeah, but you're, it used to be in December. I remember experiences, but it seems to have gotten pushed.
Okay.
But it is, that does make it difficult.
No, I'm just putting it out there. If any community members feel the need to go and support the school's CIP requests, which is Capital Improvement, yes, the Capital Improvement Plan for the town, which is where we as a district present our needs to the town for funding or to the, to the Capital Improvement Committee, basically, and ask them to help fund those projects. Again, any support is always welcome.
Can I ask a question just about our due date to the town for your budget? Is that per the charter? And I'm asking you, Mrs. Lewis, because I know you're on the charter review committee.
Yeah, and Dawn is as well. So
Oh, that's right. Sorry. I forgot Dawn was here.
But yes, yes, it is per the charter. And I believe that is something, and Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is something that I believe we have put in the parking lot for discussion when we get back to that. We're going article by article right now through our first go-through, so.
So I think it's helpful for folks to hear that. We keep saying it's after, this happens after we submit, after we submit, but we're bound by the charter, the current charter to submit the way that we.
And I don't know if Dawn wants to add anything to that?
Well, well, in reality, it's based upon the due dates and the orders for the town manager. And then we back into, and the school has to provide its submission. So a date for the school is not specifically outlined in the charter. It's just the date for the town manager when that has to be provided
Yes.
to the finance committee. So ultimately, you do the math and you see, and then the date
Right.
falls out as required.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for that better explanation, Dawn. I appreciate it. But yes, it is charter-bound, essentially.
Counting days backwards. Okay, any questions on the budget narrative? And I will say also, in terms of the capital improvement program, there are items that are specific to the schools and our facilities that fall under the DPW's request for capital. So we have several things there that obviously are not part of our operating budget. So there's more areas that we would definitely request support in terms of our CIP. Under recognitions and acknowledgements, I just want to say, and I know we've talked about it a little bit, but I want to thank Cameron Greendeer and his team. They did do two 30-minute presentations at Coombs yesterday and one 45-minute presentation here. But what, in addition to, you know, learning about sort of some of the celebrations and the regalia and what everything means, Cameron has a way of really messaging to students and staff about respect and trying to generate that understanding. So he has a really unique way of messaging. So it doesn't feel like it's just watching our native students, which is fabulous. And I love seeing them share that side of themselves. And their classmates were so excited as well. But he really does do a great job of sort of improving understanding. And hopefully that will impact beyond that presentation. So I want to thank him greatly for yesterday and all the work you put into that. Last thing is the upcoming events, which you have in your packet. But I just want to reinforce that December 6th is the student advisory committee slash school committee meeting, 5:30 here. Our Indian Education Parent Committee meetings, which normally are the second Tuesday of the month via Zoom, have been switched to the first Tuesday by a vote at last night's meeting. So our next one of those is on December 5th. The play at Mashpee Middle High School is on the Friday, the 15th, and Saturday, the 16th. And the performance is of the bookstore. And I believe they're both 7:00 PM performances. And then I think Principal Switzer did mention the Quasimodo Pasta Night. It shows as the 21st, but it was changed to the 14th. And we'll make, is that way on most of our publications. So hopefully there may be some things you want to pop into. If you'd like, there is VEX robotics competitions happening more frequently and in a sort of after-school kind of mode, three to six. I think when I checked with Amanda Howe, because I think there was one recently, there were like 29 teams. I don't quite know how that works. But anyway, there are things there that you can partake in.
Any questions?
Yes, it's okay.
Sure.
Sort of, oh, well, common question. The impact of obviously having our tribal community members come in and do the presentation and the dances, it really is impactful. And I just want to also thank Cameron for what he does and how he explains it. So just reiterating what you said, supporting the divorce, how, how poor that is for our kids in our school. I know we're going to be getting later in the agenda to the report out from the conference that happened in the past week. But in looking at the kind of past we have so far, the budget, I guess, and also pulling from, I think, something that Dawn may have asked at, at the end of last meeting, are there any considerations or have we given any thought to looking at our diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging goals and figuring out whether or not we are at a place to consider how we integrate, I guess, more focus or a position for that work to support what you folks are already doing? Is that a need? Is that something we desire? I guess I'm just proposing that as, as a conversation point for, for tonight or for future meetings.
Yeah, and I know we both, we all heard the keynote at last week's piece. And some of the roles she highlighted was definitely sort of that data person because none of us really has the capacity to dive deeply into the data. But I also, so there's both sides of it. I went to a really, and I know it's later on, but a really excellent presentation by the NEDM Public Schools. And it was a school committee member. It was their superintendent, like two or three other people. And they, they have their Portrait of a Graduate very much aligned and similar to us. But they, and they have a sort of an acronym for their work, but they do the work of the diversity, equity, and inclusion because it has to be them. Like when I look at our district leadership team, it has to be us. So from my perspective, that is an effective way to move forward and be very strategic with it versus, and having maybe some of these other roles that help us with some of the information we need. But I'm not sure necessarily having a person in that role. It has to be the right person, knowing the dynamics of our team, our staff. So I liked their approach and the success that they're having with it. But every district does do it differently, so.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I'm really bummed in this last week, last month because I got a little bit of a, I didn't watch it, I will not lie and say I did. But I heard, you know, that this was a big conversation. And a large, huge part of my work is looking at DEI and sort of how that overlay, it's really the lens through which I do all of the curriculum instruction assessment, social emotional learning, overseeing the counselor's technology, access, all of it. So I feel like it was maybe presented in such a way that we're not doing anything with DEI when in fact, it's every day, it's what we do. So I feel like with, with what Patty said, I don't know that a person needs to come in. What I think would be beneficial is for us, because I, I look at and report on the data constantly, and so does our team, but is consultants who could, not consultants so much, but partners who could help us interpret the data using a different lens than the, the lens of our team. I feel like that is the direction that would probably be most effective.
So the speaker we all heard, I hear what you're saying and I appreciate all that you do. And I know that that's the lens. And I think we communicated that back in that discussion that we do, we are doing the work. Maybe it needs to be ramped up a little bit more or focused differently somehow. But I do feel we were able to express that the work is happening. It's just not as in your face maybe at, at the moment. I think though the speaker last week at the conference brought up a really good point that having a specific data person on the administrative team that is focused, you know, solely on the data and able to really dig in and then provide the curriculum person, you know, provide you with like the really like granular level of data so that you can then really focus on the curriculum and not have all the different plates spinning in a sense so that you're freed up a little bit more to focus on that lens, making sure that lens is really focused. Whereas they're saying, okay, here's what the data's saying. I'll do all the data work and all the number crunching and all the, so that I can then say to you, this is what's needed. But then they also made the point that it should be in every school, you know, like, so whether it's, you know, I understand Patty's approach. I didn't go to that particular one. I think that was a Wednesday or
Thursday.
It was there. I went to slightly different ones for that day. But the keynote, I think what I took away from it was that it's hard to juggle because the work is so dense. And it does require, and I'm not saying you're not capable. It has nothing to do with capabilities.
And it's not about me at all.
No, no, no. No, it's about like
The job.
The job. But having, you know, rather than a consultant just come in, but having someone who's permanently just constantly digging into the data and constantly able to supply you, supply the principals, supply the superintendent. principals, supply the superintendent, the special ed director with that data to then really focus that lens. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I got from that confer, from that speaker, was that it really is more beneficial to all of you.
Yeah, I hear that. I just don't think, I would, I would not remove, I would always go to get the data myself, because that's how I can interpret it. You know, that's how I can do the work. We're small, and we have very good access to granularly get into academic data by race, by ethnicity, by gender, by disability, by, you know, whatever. It's just philosophically, I feel like we need to own it. And the, our data is so easy to access that it feels like not needed. It feels like it's more than we would need. And again, I'm just thinking from a financial perspective, you know, it's another position.
Yes, financially, it's a stretch.
I guess I'd want to hear, what are we missing that this would fill? And that would be, again, it's just one person's perspective.
I guess I don't look at it as a missing, I look at it as an enhancement to what we are currently doing to push us to that next level.
To what, though?
So we have the statistics where, you know, looking, I think, the presentation for the keynote speaker, and again, and some of the other breakouts. You guys are, the team here is already, it might be pointing to a phenomenal job of looking at, from top to bottom, how DEIB, the belonging aspect of all of that, played into the role. And yet, that's not the primary focus of any one of you, per se, because there are so many competing efforts that come into play with operations of the facility and making sure that the curriculum is, you know, all of those pieces of the day-to-day. And this, and whomever is a part of this team, whether it be allocating more resources to y'all, your current role, or figuring out if there's a way to supplement the work that you're already doing with some supportive staff or supportive teammates to help in that, in that movement. It just, I think, what was being presented and promoted was having someone or some, having someone who's completely and solely dedicated to this helps to flourish, helps to, helps to, I'm stumbling my words, I apologize, helps to promote this, the flourishing of these efforts. And from the stats that were provided at this presentation is that it seems like communities or districts that have dedicated individuals, their growth is still in some ways painful. You know, you don't reap the benefits for four to, maybe four to 10 years.
Or seven to 10 years.
It's organizational change, right?
Yeah, and that's with a dedicated individual who is specifically looking at everything through that lens and painfully looking at everything through that lens. So what does that mean for us as a district if that is not the, if we're, if folks are sharing, it's a part of everyone's role, but it's not the focus of someone's role? What does that mean for our longitudinal growth in all of the goals that we've set for ourselves, for the district? So I guess that's what I was just presenting tonight.
I think it's worth the discussion, maybe, just to look more into it. I, I'm of Dan's mindset on that, in the sense that I see it as more of a, an aid. Not to say that you wouldn't be in the data, not to say that you wouldn't be doing what you're currently doing, but it's almost like having someone really kind of make sure that the train's still moving forward while you're doing all your work in the trend. Like, it's, it's, it's an assist in a sense. But again, we can.
And it's not just me, I mean, the.
No, it would be, no, and that's the thing. Because it need, and that was the keynote speaker's point. It happens, she kept calling it the closet. She kept saying, in your, in your closet of administrators, like, add people to your closet. But also, it needed to be at the schools, in the classrooms. There needed to be people, you know, looking and seeing and observing and getting that data at the, at the each school as well. And then kind of combining it, district versus individual schools, and really just, again, making sure that the train is moving forward as slow as it might start rolling. Eventually, it'll take off, so that's.
Yeah, the only other like parallel that I see is like, it's everyone's responsibility in any organization to work on quality, right? That's everyone's goal. And yet, something magical can happen if there's a quality analyst or someone who is really beating down the doors of quality and understanding the operational work that's happening in a way that, again, promotes growth. So again, it does not need to be a specific individual, but do we need to look at the budget and figure out, is there an opportunity to request or dedicate or pursue additional funds to support the amazing work that's already happening or doing something slightly different?
And I think sometimes it might be a reallocation of resources, like we talked about. When, so it was Dr. Darnesia?
Oh, it was Darnie, hi, her. Amonthe Jackson.
Amonthe Jackson.
She's awesome.
She was, she was a great speaker.
So when she listed like what you needed, I have it written down, instructional coaches, so I felt good about that. We have made that move forward. A family student engagement coordinator, we have pieces of that. A data specialist, systems and school-based translator, which I think we are making progress there. Counselors' guidance important for students, which I think we do, we can always, I would love to add a licensed social worker at the district level. And I loved her analogy, that equity is the dining table, that everything is on top of. And that visual is really, I think, a good one to keep with. But, and then the other thing she talked about, and I have the chart as a picture, but belonging looks like MTSS, SEL, UDL, and CRL, Cultureally Responsive Learning. So I think about all those pieces and how significantly it is a part of our strategic plan, and it's woven into all of that. So it was, it was good.
I could listen to her.
She is good.
But to Dan's point too, and I know Consuelo said DEI, can we just make sure of the website? Can we please make sure the B is there?
Yeah.
The B, the B is very important.
The B, and when we reference it, we do, in our, in our strategic plan or our Plan for Success, it is just DEI. So I think that's where she's.
Just as long as our website, because I think.
Well, and there was a summer workshop that I went to that had, it was organized from the, the Human Rights Group on the Cape, several superintendents. And from their perspective, and even the Thalmith, DEI, they do use the B, but they were very specific about the other three pieces being in place. You don't just get to hook on the B.
No, no, that's what I mean. The B is important because the DEI gets you to the right.
Right, and, but that it seems to be a little bit more accepted when you have stuck the B on there. People, people have become a little bit pushed back on DEI, and when you have that there, they seem to.
I think, yeah, definitely is the palliative, the palliative piece of it. But I think something that also, you know, sparked my interest in her presentation was really the concept of those three pieces are important to the work, but belonging is for everybody, right? And regardless of background, makeup, whatever. And, and as we know, because again, I will say, we are leaps and bounds ahead of many other districts which presented or spoke about their pain points at the conference. And we have a long way to go. But, but being able to focus in, in a really meaningful way of how does that all lead to belonging? And how do we ensure that for our community, for our students, that, again, it's presented in a way that is really true to the goals that we've set, and I think was, was very poignant at the presentations.
Did Dawn have anything to add to anything?
Dawn, would you like to add anything? You're not coming, you're not coming to, you're not coming through super well right now.
Maybe text, maybe type it in the chat, but it's not.
We're going to come here in just a second, so.
There, there you are.
Go on, and I'll circle back in just a second.
Okay.
All right, well, you're clear right now, so.
I know.
Okay.
All right, so.
Whatever you're doing.
Real quick, real quick, do we, have any feedback on how Thalmith's approach to do it at the town level, how that has been working out through the schools?
No, so their initial approach, which was a combined position, did not work out well. And now they have their own correct, like, it's the right match of a person who's just for the schools.
So they dropped it for the town, or they're doing one for, they hired two?
No. No, the initial person hired did not work out, and that was a shared position between the schools and the town. And I don't know what the town of Thalmith is doing, but the schools then hired their own person, and that's working well.
Okay. I think that ultimately, coming up with what the objectives are, and what we want to try to accomplish, then really helps dictate what the plan is and how to approach it from the resource perspective and determining, do we have the information? Are we able to necessarily make the right decisions, particularly if we're adding additional resources, incorporating that into our budget plans, et cetera, which there's a conversation that really needs to happen now for next, for, well, we need two years down right now. A real, a real quick conversation that needs to happen between now and the end of June or.
Yeah, no, I think it's kind of, I think we're just trying to put it on the radar and start the talk for, as we keep moving forward. But I think that's, I think we agree with you, Dawn. It's not something we're probably going to get in overnight, because I don't think it's something that should be rushed. But I agree. I don't know, Dan.
I would agree, yeah.
All right. Ashley, thank you, Superintendent DeBoer.
In your packet are the FY '24 budget reports. The only thing I really think to note is where you see those negative items in the FY '24 budget, those are the offsets to school choice, which will be corrected at the end of the year. They just show negative currently. Do you guys have any questions?
Can, did you need to speak up a little?
Pull your microphone along, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, Ashley's going to move her microphone closer.
Can you hear me better, Dawn?
Uh, maybe closer.
The next part of my.
Can you hear her?
Yeah, my soft voice, I guided.
I know. So the next part of my budget reports is the.
Okay.
Is the food service, PNL. This was submitted to DUCY for Q1. More information about food service was requested in the beginning of the school year. The food service director has also provided me with some reports. So this is the PNL. I will submit this to the board after the committee, after we submit to DUCY each quarter. One thing to note on here, you'll see we have not received our reimbursements for August and September yet. They are at least one to two months behind. So those will be coming in, and then they get reported about a month behind on the town side. They do revenue on the first of the month, so there will be a lag. But I will tell you that we did receive approximately $74,000 between August and September reimbursements. Do you have any questions on the PNL?
Ashley, it's Dawn.
Yes.
I do have a question.
Okay.
The food service director and the nutritionist, I believe, were included on the report, but in actuality, were not part of the food services budget, except for reporting to DUCY. Is that correct?
That's correct. DUCY, when they receive a PNL report, require it to be the entire picture, food service. So this is general fund and revolving fund. So if you note on the expenditures, you see salary and wages, RF, which is revolving fund, and that's for our staff inside the school buildings. And then GF is for general fund, and that is for our food service director and assistant food service director.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The food service department also wanted to share how excited they are to be a part of the team. They've hit the ground running since they started at the end of September. They did attend the School Nutrition Association Conference in October, where they got to get a great deal of professional development and training and also network with peers. They are both new to these roles, but they were able to build their network within Massachusetts. And that's something that we haven't historically done in Mashpee. But these two hires are really eager to be a part of the school nutrition team across the state. I also have some participation numbers for this year. So starting in September, breakfast was at a 13% participation and lunch was at 37%. October, breakfast was at 17% and lunch was at 57%. And then November through the 9th, breakfast was at 20% and lunch was at 65%. So you can see the growth. There have been changes to the menu, and they're going to continuously change menus as they go forward. They work with our nurses, and they also work with the building principals. So if there's really something that's not working in the cafeteria, our principals have been great to bring it to our food service director, and we've been able to make changes accordingly. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you for this report. It's a great, great snapshot of what's going on, and I appreciate the information. And thank you, Dawn. I believe this was a request of yours, so thank you for requesting it, because this is really insightful. So thank you.
I have another, another question for Ashley. It's something that she doesn't have in the packet, though, is if you could give us an update in regard to the HVAC project?
I'm not there yet. I'm still.
It's on the agenda, Dawn, just not in the packet.
Ah, okay.
So my final part.
Maybe.
My final part for food service is there is a request to increase the pay for catering events. We call it functions here in the food service department. So outside of their normal workday, they are looking to pay the food service workers two times their base rate. We don't have a lot of these functions throughout the year that would have this pay, but it is an incentive for our employees to work them. Something like the pasta dinner that's happening at Quashnet, our food service team does work. And they do such a great job during the day feeding our students that it's an incentive for them to come back after their day, to do it again for our families and our students. So the food service team in the department would really appreciate this, and I'm asking for a vote on this tonight.
What's the current, is it just flat rate, or?
So they do have a salary schedule. I can provide that to you offline. We're also reviewing that, because that was set in 2020. And as we know, rates have gone up across the board, and that's something that we want to review. So we're hoping to bring you a new salary schedule in December, January. The team is looking at other districts to see where we are. Another thing about the fact, the function pay in catering is that it is billed out to whoever is having the function. So it's not just a hit to our revolving account. So when they do functions, they invoice the department or the organization that's holding the function.
All right. So that being said, I'll entertain a motion to, I guess, increase the wages of the food service employees who work functions to two times.
So sorry.
I'm trying to get out of work.
Sorry, I think you might need to wait, because I don't see it as an asterisk for a vote.
That's okay. That's okay. We can wait. It's not.
So we'll put it December 20th.
Yes. And then would you be able to have those, the schedule prior to that, possibly?
Yes, yep.
Or we could always retroactive pay as well?
Yes, and I will say, just kind of to give you a little bit more information, when we present the new salary schedule, our food service employees have been working with one person down in each kitchen since the beginning of the year. And I would request that you retro that salary schedule to the beginning of the school year, so they would be an increased wage. So that would be one thing I'd be asking for.
That makes sense.
So just so you have a heads up.
Fair enough. So we'll put that on for the, you don't want it on the 6th when you meet with.
So technically, we could do that.
I mean, we, we could do it at the 6th, because we would have the committee at forum. I mean, it couldn't hurt to put it on there. I mean, the agenda.
It's an agenda, so.
Yeah, okay. Let's do that.
My next agenda item is the HVAC project update. So we had our engineer out on-site twice, once at the end of October and once in November. At the October review, they do have changes to the scope of the engineering proposal. So they are seeking an additional $7,000 for structural engineering costs. Because this project is done under DPW, the town manager has to sign off on any of those changes, and he has signed off on that. So we are moving forward. The structural engineering is specific to the roof, to just ensure that we have enough support to put additional rooftop units on there. I believe they were back on Friday to review that, but I haven't spoken to Catherine yet. So I have a meeting with her tomorrow, so I'll have more information. When they did their walkthrough in October, there was also discussion that there might need to be architectural designs done that was not in the original scope. So I'm waiting for that proposal to see what that increase will be. I will keep you posted when I have more information. Again, because it's run under the DPW, the town manager will sign that request of change. So you won't have to do anything with it, but I will let you know how much it is. Dawn, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. My final update is about bus electrification. So we were approached by the Cape Cod Collaborative to work with. So we were approached by the Cape Cod Collaborative to work with, what is it, with Mass CEC to see if Mashpee can move forward with getting electric buses. So this program is working with the advisory services. They are doing a cohort of schools in Massachusetts. I believe it's about 25. We were--
What?
So this is to support clean bus transition. And so the school district was chosen because of our participation in the collaborative and also the school committee's desire to move to electric buses. It also, because we have a native tribe within our community, was another reason why the state had selected us. So what that means for us is we're working with the state and various organizations to see what our fleet is currently and how we can make that transition. And at the end of this work, we'll have a deliverable saying, what can you do? Is this something that Mashpee can support and what is the cost of that going to be? So one of the things we do have is we have solar canopies that are going to be installed in all of our schools. In the high school, that's where our buses primarily park and the canopy is gonna be over that. So when we were talking to Eversource and with the DPW, we're talking about should we install chargers there now for the future if we're going to have electric buses? So it's an ongoing conversation with all parties. The DPW has been brought in, so we can talk about kind of where the location of things would be and what the next steps are with our, of their solar decisions and the canopies. So as many of you know, there are a lot of grant opportunities, federal, state, and locally. And this process will give us the tools to apply for those grants. It'd be great to do it now. There's one due in January, but we just don't have enough information. And we'll really be spinning our wheels if we just went ahead to apply for something that we didn't have all the data for. So it's a free opportunity for us to know where we stand and how we can get there if we really want to convert our entire fleet to electric. Any questions?
I know, just looking forward to it. Again, I said earlier that this was one of my previous careers was in transportation. And there are a lot of interesting costs and other maintenance factors that come into play with electrified vehicles and especially buses. So I'm hoping that, obviously, the feedback that we'll receive on this assessment will include all of those arenas because I know it can be really challenging at times for a maintenance perspective.
Apparently you need a very strong lift.
Yes, you do.
All right. Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate all of those updates. Don, did you have anything else before we move on for Ashley?
Well, that was it.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go buy an extension cord.
Well, Don, you're up next with the curriculum subcommittee working group or subcommittee update. Do you have anything you want to share out from your recent meeting?
Yeah, we got together the other day and kind of started talking about what the objective we was here and going to take a look at our curriculum and trying to identify what everyone wants, what everyone needs, and what we can provide. And so we talked about trying to do a student slash family survey early in the mid-year so that we can try to get feedback and do that separately from the general family survey that comes later in the spring. And that's about the highlight of what we had accomplished.
The family survey comes out in February, does it not?
Yeah, we worked on our family--
Yeah, Cathy asked if the family survey, that's always generally like the last two weeks of February. What we talked about too was possibly, and we will be meeting with our student advisory council on November 29th, but trying to get sort of a somewhat short survey that would inform practices as we head into the program of studies night at Mashpee Middle High School and then students are selecting. I know we also want to sort of do a little bit of looking beyond that at our feeder programs that sort of, you know, at the Quashnet School in particular. So that was the goal, is that we come up with sort of a survey that would be administered in December, I thought.
Yeah, the survey was for children, was for students. And it's very short.
No, I just worry at the beginning of the year, I didn't want it to--
No. We felt the exact same way, but we want to get it in December so that before the program of studies night at the end of January, we're planning the program of studies based on the information from kids of what they need. We also talked about pathways. You know, Don was referencing that, you know, we want to make sure if a kid starts out in a program that just because a person leaves, they can finish in that program, which led us to talking about the pathways that we already have in existence. So we're going to take a look at those pathways at our next subcommittee meeting and then see if we need to adapt, adjust, enhance what already exists. Right, Don?
Yeah.
Okay. And then-- the finance working group, we met, it looks like the same day--
Yes, it was a good day.
At a different time. And we discussed kind of what we just went over. We reviewed the budget narrative, kind of spoke with superintendent about some of the highlights. And I agree, after you mentioned it, captioning those pictures, maybe add that on, but I like that idea. But we kind of just went over that, reviewed it. And I believe we'll be having our next one probably not too long. Right, so-- Don, do you have anything you want to add to the finance working group meeting?
No, no, thank you.
All right.
And just a reminder, it's generally the finance working group members that are likely to participate in the December 12th 9:00 AM meeting at Town Hall.
Precise.
Noted. Time off requests will go in on Monday.
There have been virtual, folks participated virtually.
Yeah. I can go--
All right, perfect.
Okay, on to specifically assigned unfinished role business. We have a vote on, to revisit the vote, or reconsider the vote, well, actually not reconsider. But we do need to revisit the vote on the Mashpee Middle High School Boys Hockey Camp in Tilton. We had, Don had brought up a question of the policy for buses and whether or not we had a policy, which we do, that states students who are going on overnight trips or late night trips do require a motor coach. I believe Superintendent DeBoer looked into Monomoy and spoke with Monomoy's superintendent and they have pretty much the exact same policy verbatim. However, their school committee did not have Don to remind them that they had the policy. So they voted. No, I appreciate Don's knowledge. I'm always impressed by it. So they did not, and I actually saw one of our colleagues from Monomoy at the conference and I said to her, did you forget you have a policy? And she looked at me like I wasn't there that night. I believe Superintendent DeBoer, you did speak and we've come to some kind of agreement, but we will need to vote on if we as a committee approve of this agreement, so.
So I did speak with Scott Carpenter, the superintendent at Monomoy. They did vote to approve the trip. They are using Monomoy vans. He felt it was a very transparent presentation, so the vote is the vote. We have, I believe, four Mashpee students who are part of the Monarchs. That's the name of the co-op team. And Superintendent Carpenter said, yes, our students are absolutely welcome to ride on those vans. Ashley did connect with their business manager. They have an additional insurance rider for the trip itself. We are adding one as well for our students. So at this point, we've asked our attorney to create a waiver form that the parents of those four students would sign, where they're acknowledging and giving permission for the students to ride and participate using the Monomoy vans. So I think just trying to make sure that you, you know, you obviously still support the trip, but knowing that this waiver will be in place, that the parents of our Mashpee students will be signing, that basically acknowledges that it is not abiding by the policy that we have, but-- So you're basically waiving the policy.
What she would be asking is that we waive the policy--
Yes.
For this particular trip. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, and I will say, you know, in talking to the athletic director, I guess you can always interpret language how you want it to be interpreted. So they, the wording in our policy manual, as is in Monomoy, is "The use of vans or private automobiles for trips planned to include late-night or overnight student travel is prohibited. Late-night or overnight trips will use commercial motor coaches." The point of the athletic director is that there is no late-night traveling.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Right. So you could interpret it that way. They are traveling up in the daytime. They are staying at a nearby hotel. The vans are being used to go from the hotel to Proctor Academy. There is none of this sort of overnight traveling in a vehicle. So that, which wasn't really a way I've ever looked at that, but he was, so I don't know.
So then I guess the question to us as the committee is, do we go with that interpretation? Or do we feel safer waiving the policy as we originally interpreted it? Interpreted did, that's such a weird-- How we understood it. And I guess that's the question before us, so.
I guess my gut reaction would be in hearing Superintendent DeBoer's read of it, that I heard it as if there is overnight travel because that is the highest risk for transportation is when folks could fall asleep or other factors related to late-night travel.
Stand as is and using the interpretation that overnight travel is specifically driving during the hours of, I don't know, let's say 10:00 and 6:00 AM or 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, just for the sake of overnight? Or are we going to say overnight means a trip that involves staying somewhere overnight? And therefore, do we need the waiver to be applied?
I personally hear it as the first option.
Don? Your thoughts?
I think interpreting it the way we originally did is appropriate. I don't want to set up, I guess I don't want to set a precedent that we have, for example, the baseball team driving down to Florida. And they only drive during the daytime.
No, they fly.
Well, I know.
I know. He's giving us an hypothetical.
Well, why don't we do DC, the DC trip?
You use coaches.
We use motor coaches because I would say on the, well, one, it's comfort level. But second, when we come back on that Wednesday night and get home at like 11:30 at night, it's--
And leaving it.
You leave at 5:00 in the morning. It's dark when we leave. Well, not, yeah, it's dark when we leave. Dark when we come home. We don't travel overnight, but also you can't go to DC in a school bus.
I'm of the mind, I hear both sides. I think, you know, the support for the trip is still there regardless. I don't think this is gonna impact them going either way. I think perhaps we do need to maybe review the policy and shore up the wording a little bit. But I think in the interest of, you know, avoiding setting a precedent and avoiding a potential misinterpretation down the road, perhaps in this instance, I'm inclined to recommend a vote to, for the waivers. Because, you know, and then refer it back to the policy subcommittee to maybe review the wording and see if we can better clarify what overnight travel or, you know, what those words, maybe just better define it and clarify what that is. Again, I hear both sides. I understand both interpretations. Like to Don's point, my interpretation was a trip that meant staying somewhere overnight. But after hearing A.D. Trevary's definition, I can see how that might have been interpreted. So, that being said, I will entertain a motion. I don't know how to word this. Entertain a motion--
I'll make a motion that we approve the trip. Subject to waiving our policy on overnight travel.
Did you get that, Charlie? Okay, thank you.
This particular case alone.
Okay, thank you, Don.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And any further discussion?
So do you end up having to have another vote? Will you waive that policy? Or is that part of this?
No, he-- He waived-- He put it all in there. We should be okay with that motion. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also am a yes, so, thank you. And then I guess I would like to, I don't know that we need to vote on referring it back to the policy subcommittee, but perhaps, again, I would like to maybe refer that policy back just to review that language and make sure it's a little bit more clear and less-- I mean, I know there is some need sometimes for ambiguous language, but this might not be the case in this one. So, thank you. Moving right along. We had our first Zoom community meeting with the two school committee members as part of our goals for this year that the school committee's been working on. We had, I think we had what, three? We had three people plus Elijah, the Quashnet principal, Principal Switzer, was there along with myself, Brian, and Superintendent DeBoer, Vice Chair Whedon, myself and Superintendent DeBoer. I'd say it was really successful. I mean, there weren't a lot of people there, but one of the people who attended was a community member who doesn't even have children in the district. And at the end, he explained, you know, he served on the school board in New Jersey for many years and kind of understood the work that we do, but didn't understand necessarily how we do it in Massachusetts, let alone in Mashpee. And he found it to be very informative. He complimented us all on the board, so I'm passing that, those words along to my fellow committee members that he appreciates the work we're doing and thinks we're doing great things here in Mashpee. So that was kind of a nice note to end on. You know, hopefully the next one, I know it's about budgets, but maybe we'll get some more people to come and learn about how we do our budgets. But yeah, I think it went well, so.
I think so too. And we did record the Zoom and we shared it out in a Friday communication. And it is also posted on the, I mean, on the school committee page. Just like when you watch any of your other recorded meetings, it's specifically there as well. So it did capture through the slides and what you shared a really good piece of information about school committee and their role, so I thought it was good.
And the election. So if anybody's curious about what it is to be on school committee, go to the website, watch that little video. And papers get pulled in February, so keep that in mind. So, moving right along. New business. We have the first review of the FY '25 school year calendar. There are not too many changes I'm aware of. I think we're going kind of similar to how we've done it Superintendent DeBoer and I kind of looked at this at our last two meetings. But Superintendent DeBoer, if you want to speak to--
Yeah, so this would be your first review. You won't vote till the next time. We have shared this with all in the district in terms of our staff for any input they had. It has the traditional start for staff being that Monday before Labor Day, which is a little bit earlier than normal. Labor Day is very early. And we still have our traditional one-half day a month, generally the first Monday, sometimes not always. We did look at the possibility of making a full 10-days break at the Christmas time, based on where Christmas falls. But, and it used to be like, oh, don't reopen the building for two days in the heat. But the surrounding districts are all going with the eight days and so we're gonna leave it at the eight days. Graduation will be on the 7th, which also is a little bit later. And, you know, hopefully we won't have any snow days. But we have our two traditional, well, the two traditional PD days at the beginning of the school year. Then we have one going into Indigenous People Weekend. So for families, that's a four-day weekend. And then our other one is usually March, which looks like it's March 14th for school year, '24, '25.
Time is funny.
Right.
So again, take a look at this. You know, if you have questions, Superintendent DeBoer, I'm sure is happy to answer them. But yeah, so I expect we'll be voting on this. Don?
This is Don. I do have one question. In regard to May--
May? Yeah.
Fill up the calendar, I guess, and I can speak to it specifically. May, May 16th.
That's a Friday, yeah. That's a Friday, yes.
And May 9th.
Yes.
No. I'm sorry, June. June 9th and June 16th.
Okay.
So, June 9th is half-day for PD, correct?
Yes.
And then the last day of school is a half-day on June 16th.
Yes, with no, with no snow days, yes.
Does there any reason why those can't be flipped? So that the kids are done on Friday, because they're not going to do anything on Monday?
Yes, they will.
Well, we have to have, we have to have reached, we have to have reached the 180 days, which is the 16th. If you, are you looking to do something in another spot?
Or are you looking to move the 9th, half-day on the 9th to the 13th?
Yeah, I'm looking that if there's a way to end it on the 13th, considering those snow days.
We'd have to start earlier.
Yeah, you'd have to, well, you'd have to look at, well, you'd have to have another day in there where kids have gone to school.
At least half a day.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, at least half a day, but you, but you're adding a day.
So.
Where would you add it?
The 14th would be my logical choice. Make that the half-day, to Don's point, make the 14th the half-day, then March 14th, instead of it being a full day off.
That really kills us for professional development. I mean, we use that March date for safety training with the police and, I don't know. I mean.
There, yeah, it is.
Just.
It also changes the contractual, I mean, we have Unit A for 184 days contractually, so if we changed March 14th to a half-day.
They'd still have to come.
It would only be 183.
They would have to come, and that, that's not going to be pretty. I do hear what you're saying, but you're optimistic that we'll have no snow days too. Like you can do all of that rearranging, so we end on the 13th and then we have a snow day, and we're still on the 16th.
I understand that. That was, that was my initial question, so I will flip the initial look at this, but have we already said we've got to get 180 days in one way or the other?
Yeah, you, you might like, you might like to know that NOSID has 182 days for their students.
What?
Yeah, I was just talking to her today.
You used to have 183, so.
No, I mean for kids, students.
Okay, that's an offline conversation, but how is that happening?
We're not NOSID, we don't have to worry. Moving on. We kind of talked a little bit about the share-out from the conference, but last week was the Joint Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Joint Conference. It was three days of policy, budget, and all kinds of fun school committee and superintendent topics to make all of our volunteer hearts and professional hearts sleep with joy. Thursday, I mean, Dan, do you want to, I, I'll save mine because I had the most boring time, I think, but.
Yeah, so I, I had the opportunity to attend all three days, the last being full day of charting the course, which was exciting, but at least for the other two days, I think the breakout sessions were really wonderful, the keynote speaker was fabulous. It was very, it was very nice to hear that some of the pain points and areas of growth that we see for our goals is, are in line with some of the other districts and what they're, where they're currently at and what they're hoping to do. So being able to hear kind of their approaches, what they're interested in doing, and how they're planning to move forward, I think brought a lot of insight. And also, I think my last comment would be, you know, a really great opportunity to also collaborate around, again, our state's approach to how we move policy and procedure forward at a state level.
Well, I'm glad you were able to attend your, your first big hoot-nanny. Superintendent DeBoer, do you want to add your experience?
I went, I went to one workshop, which we had already had, it was the Safe Schools, it was basically the Sandy Hook Attorney General connection, new attorney general. We had already progressed through, so that was not a good choice on my part. I will say that, and I referenced it before, the Needham presentation was really inspiring, listening to sort of what they have done and how they do it and how they collaborate and how they lead. So that left me feeling like, okay, and they had a lot of the pieces in place that we already have in place, so it was their approach. The keynote was good. I went to the legal session with Mike Long, which was, I'm so glad I went early because there was not a seat to be had. Very informative, actually, it was two different attorneys, sort of what, you know, trying to be, think ahead a few steps so you don't have a misstep. And it's always wise advice to always check with your attorney way before you decide to do something. I'm trying to think of the other ones that I went. I know that Dr. Curly was able to go in Dr. Hanson's place. She went to a couple, she went to the IP rollout, which we've been involved with piloting. We both went to one, which was from the Reeds Collaborative, and it was around this, wrapped around sort of mental health services, and so you, you get so many slots, and then, you know, you would have students and their families be sort of embraced by this, which it did sound appealing. There was a little sort of back conversation that others shared, and it got us talking sort of about our own collaborative and sort of some thoughts about that, and we were able, we were talking to some of the other Cape superintendents on that topic. So it, it kind of left as a side conversation that the superintendents and their Fed directors sort of need to have a little gathering offline to do some cleaning.
Very bad. So my Wednesday was the delegate assembly, which in the, I think I've been at for now, I think I've been the delegate for the last four years, pretty much since I got on, I think I was the delegate. This was by far the most interesting, and I use the word interesting loosely, delegate assembly I have been to in a while. It got a little off the rails. We started at 3:15 and it didn't end until quarter of 7:00. Only one resolution was passed without a hold, and that was the second resolution on investigations and recommendations for transportation bidding procedures. No one had any objections to that one. That one passed, no problem. The other seven, however, did not. They, they were a little bit more involved with some spirited discussion and debate. The full stable funding for Metco passed, that was debated. Regional transportation, that failed. So that one, because it was already subject to appropriation and people wanted to hold the state accountable rather than do what this amendment was recommending, we didn't, I don't believe we had taken a stand on that one, so, but just passing that along. Resolution four, which was the suggestion that MASC recommends that all districts adopt a DEI, like a position of DEI coordinator. This one was debated for a while with regard to a bunch of amendments that kept changing the intent of the person who put it forward. It ended up getting tabled. The Mass School Building Authority was another very hotly debated one, and that one held us up for almost an hour of debates, where at one point we had an amendment to the amendment to the amendment, which then polarity ensued. But that one, the issue with that one was people were concerned about the inclusion of public preschools and whether that was district public preschools or just any public preschool in the town that would be avail, like, able to use the funds from the Mass School Building Authority for build, so there was a lot of debate around including preschools. And then somebody mentioned that kindergarten might not be included because it's not mandated by the state either, and was it preschools included in a district that were already in a building, or was it like buildings separate in a district specifically for pre? It, it went down so many rabbit holes. Meanwhile, the reception was happening and someone snuck out to get cheese for themselves, and they were outed, somebody else went and got their free drink for the night. So it, it kind of just devolved at that point, which then led to Resolution six, six and seven, so that one got tabled, six got tabled, seven, I did not write it down and now I forget. Resolution eight on the safe storage of firearms did pass, so that's going to go forward with, you know, recommending that communities work with local law enforcement agencies. So basically, what we're sending up to the legislature is a little less than the eight. At one point, somebody made a motion to adjourn, which would have ended everything, and another person made a motion to suspend till, or, you know, recess until 9:30 that night, which it, it, like I said, in all four years, this is the most interesting one. I also attended some, I, I really enjoyed the general session on Thursday. On Wednesday, I got there a little later in the day, but it was, it was good getting there for the general session. And then on Friday, I attended some different ones, just because I wanted to kind of see different things. We had our division meeting, I was elected the Division Seven Secretary, so I am now part of our division leadership as well. And we're gonna, we've got, we got some really good feedback from the members who were able to come from our division and talk about challenges we're facing and what types of supports we need from MASC and what type of programs that might help school committees in Division Seven, because we kind of all agreed that where we live in such, such a seasonal economy and we face slightly different challenges than some of the rest of the state does in terms of housing, in terms of our economies, in terms of just being on the Cape and Islands and Carver and Wareham. Can't forget those two. But it, we are a little bit different, and so we kind of were talking about how, you know, we need to kind of communicate that better to MASC and let them know, you know, what we, what we need for support. I attended, the ones I attended on Friday, Extreme Board Behavior, Rules, Rights and Strategies, just kind of, again, trying to hear what's going on and how people deal with different things going on. I attended, not that I want to say this in front of Superintendent DeBoer, but I did attend a vacancy in the superintendency because I know that day is going to come someday. I'd rather be prepared than not prepared, so I went and listened, not that I want you to go ever, because you can't go ever, but you know, whatever. I learned some things. I kept the, kept the little packets. And then I did attend the chair chat, which was like a roundtable chat with a bunch of chairs and vice-chairs of various school committees throughout the state, which was really great collaborating, collaborating and, you know, troubleshooting some of the things that we're facing in our different districts around, you know, public comment, around how to function efficiently and effectively as a board, collaborate together as a board, just lots of great, great conversations in that one. And then the last one I attended, that to end my day, was a session on parliamentary procedure, because it's always good to brush up on your parliamentary procedure and learn some of the ins and outs. And if you've never been to a session with Glenn Kuchar, who is the executive president of MASC, I highly recommend it. This one being one because he tells you all kinds of little sneaky tricks and you kind of go, you're in charge and you shouldn't be telling us how to cheat the system, but thank you for, for telling us. It's all in good fun though, but it was, it was very good. As always, I really love these sessions. Great to see everybody that, you know, there's some people you see year after year, and there was one person in one of the sessions, he's 85-years-old, he's in his like 22nd year on the school committee, or 22nd, he's like, he's just an institution apparently in his town, but a wealth of information, and he comes to them every year, because he likes, you know, to get together with the people who are doing the same kind of work and talk about how we can all make our work better. So that's, that's what I took away from it. So, yeah. Are there any items the Chair did not know reasonably in advance? Hearing none. One thing I did learn in our parliamentary procedures thing is that we do need a motion to adjourn, and you can never just dispense with an agenda. That is a big no-no. So, and I asked specifically.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I need a second for that motion, please.
Back in.
All right, and Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I am a yes also.
All right, John.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm disconnecting you, John.